Okay.
Feel free. Feel free to jump in anytime you feel like I'm um missing something. Um, as per our meeting guidelines, uh, speak one at a time. Um, follow the Deerfield Code of Conduct, be respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, uh, and non-repetitive. Uh, this meeting is being held remotely as an alternative means of public access in accordance with the House Bill number fifty-eight of the one hundred and ninety-third General Court, which extended the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Uh, extending them until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I see we have a quorum uh, of commissioners, so I will do a roll call of the commission to state your name and say you're here. Sean Libby here.
Kate Devlin here. Pete, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm muted. Uh, Pete Law here. And thank you for doing this, Sean.
No problem. Uh, I think I'm seeing the full screen of people, so I'm not sure if Ben has made it on. I don't think so. Uh, but we have a quorum, so we can move forward. Have the members had sufficient time to review the minutes from March twenty-third? Does anyone have any questions regarding those minutes?
Um.
And Pete, if you haven't had time to review the minutes, we can approve them next meeting.
Uh, no, I did. I had time to review. Uh, I think any of the questions there will be still open items for tonight. So, yeah, I've had review and I'm fine.
All right, I would, uh, accept a motion to, uh, approve the minutes.
Um, Kate Devlin, I'd like to make a motion, but also note that Ben Burn has just come on.
Excellent.
Oh, great.
Um, so maybe before I make the motion, Ben, do you have any comments on the minutes of the last meeting?
Uh, no, I do not. Should be good as is.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes of March twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting as written.
I'll second. Ben Burn.
I'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Sean Libby, aye.
Uh, Pete Law, aye.
Kate Devon, aye.
I heard you, Ben. So that's, uh, four approved. Um, moving on to new business. Um, we have the Antonellis Farm Conservation Restriction, and I see that we have Elaine Peteroi here. Hi Elaine, um, you're representing, and I assume you'd like to speak.
Um, yes, um, so my name is Elaine Peter. I am the Conservation Director at the Franklin Land Trust. And I believe Mike Antonellis is on the Zoom call. If Mike is Mike Antonellis, um. And so we are here as part of the conservation restriction, um, implementation process. And for those who are not super familiar with it, when you do a conservation restriction in, in the Commonwealth, you go through an approval process with um, obviously the landowner, the land trust, and um, the Conservation Commission has asked for support in, in the form of a municipal certification attesting to the public benefits, which I have shared with the board already, and those are purposes that are essentially outlined in the conservation restriction. Um, and then we also, after that, and once it's in its final form, we come back and ask um, the Select Board to sign the conservation restriction as part of the process for completing it. And so this is our first step in meeting with the town, um, to um, ask for their support of this project. So um, for those of you who don't know, Mike Antonellis, um, has a hundred and fifty-seven acres that has been in his family for some time in the North Meadows, consisting of over a dozen parcels. They are actively farmed. They also contain significant riparian wetlands, oxbows, riverfront. Um, and so significant wildlife habitat, waterfowl habitat, and protection of the watershed, along with the predominant number of, most of the acres are all prime farmland soils. So the conservation restriction that we're working on with him will allow continued agriculture, um, continued management of the property. Uh, you know, the building of agricultural structures for his use, protection of the wildlife habitat, um, forestry in so much as he needed to do forestry in, in terms of any any cutting and other traditional uses. And so the the project is slated to be completed at the end of the summer. Um, we will be purchasing this, and this has been through private fundraising and grants and foundation, um, applications and private donations from a lot of local people to make this happen. And so um, so this is the part of the process where we ask the Conservation Commission to support this in, in terms of the signing and voting on the municipal certification. And Mike, I don't know if, if you would like to um, say anything on your behalf or talk about the farm and if he's on. Maybe, I believe that Mike is, I see it just a mic, so I don't see a Mike Antonella, so I assume that's Mike. If he's on the phone or online. Um, so maybe he'll, maybe he'll unmute and come on. Um, but so, so we're, we're here to answer any questions you have about the project and then seek your support in, in terms of the municipal certification for it. And I did have maps. I can certainly share, share the maps unless somebody wants to share them. That, you know, I sent them, but I did, I can share the map to show it. If you'd like, I can do that.
Uh, Elaine, this is Pete Law with the Commission. Uh, if you would, uh, be able to show that maps, just a couple of quick questions, if you could pull up on the screen, that'd be great.
Yep. Okay, so this is, this is the topo. It shows the open space, which is the other conserve land that's all in yellow. Um, which is, this is predominantly all the other farmland, uh, parcels that are already protected. Golf course is not protected, and then Mike's, uh, property as it sits, as it sits within it.
Hi Elaine, Sean Libby. I had, uh, I think this is a great project. Um,
Awesome.
I fully support this. This is wonderful. I had just one question, and it was more because I've seen the maps and um, it's really actually in the very first part of the certificate that you provided for us, which is excellent. Um, it's, it includes public access along the Pecumtik Range. Um, but I don't see any of these parcels actually along the Pecumtik Range. I didn't know, these aren't going to be open to public access. This is just going to be protected and preserved, correct?
Yes. Where did I have that in there? Because honestly, I don't remember that part.
It's the very last sentence of the very first, um.
Oh, yes.
Open, open space.
Open space, yeah.
I, I thought initially, this doesn't include any land on the Pecumtik Ridge, or as I would think.
Yes, you're correct. This is really just giving, so that really gives the regional context to it. Um, and so there's a lot of, uh, deep land along the ridge, um, owned by DCR and the, um, friends of the Pecumtik that are, that are open to the public. So that's what it was referring to, but.
It's in the viewscape. Okay, I got, okay.
Yeah, so I will, um, I will actually tweak that to make sure that's not confusing. Yeah.
I just didn't typically think public access was written into these APRs, and so I wanted that to be clear, but, um, perfect.
Right. And so because this is a working landscape, um, there is no affirmative right of public access on this, so it's really up to Mike, um, to post or not post or allow as it is, as it is a working landscape. I know there's so many people that just walk the roads and such. Yep.
Elaine, this is Pete Law. Um, what is the total acres? It looks like at one point it says a hundred and forty-four acres, but then this, uh, another area is ninety-three designated as Fish and Wildlife and a hundred and two by priority. What's, what's the total acreage? I, I might have missed that.
So the total acres down on the bottom of the map, it's, it's a hundred and fifty-seven, still confirming the surveys.
Fifty-seven, okay.
Yep, the acreages that you're seeing in the certification section is basically outlining certain types of habitat. So under soils and health, there is indeed a hundred and forty-four acres what the state designates as prime um, for, prime number one farmland soils. And then the other acreages are the different context. And if I can share, I'll stop this and share another one. The Natural Heritage map, um. Nope. Okay, it's not showing up on here. But so all along, all along the, um, all along the river's edge is all biomap, um, rare species habitat. And so this whole swath around here is all high quality, uh, habitat according to the Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program, which is some of the, the acreages that are being mentioned in the biodiversity section.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but in total, a hundred and fifty-seven acres.
Yeah, so along the riverfront, you have there, you will have with, with this quite a span, and then inland, there's a few open areas by, uh, what other people own and stuff.
Yes. Yeah, and the oxbow in here and.
Okay. Nope. I think I might, might have lost contact. Can you still hear me?
I can hear you, Pete.
I can.
Okay.
Do any of the, uh, can other commissioners have any questions regarding this application? Because I can open it up to anyone else at the meeting as well, um, that might be in attendance if they have questions.
Just one last question, Sean, is, um, this is just a request to do the certification and sign off to, um, to show that there's a public interest in it, and then, and what's the next step is to Select Board, uh, Elaine and so forth. This is our just kind of acknowledgement of, of an approval, right?
And, uh, correct. So, so after this, Mike and I are, um, you know, the Franco-Land Trust and Mike and, and, and attorneys as needed will be just finalizing the, um, the language in the actual document, and that, and that goes off to the, um, Department of Conservation Services, this Conservation Restriction Reviewer. And they send us back comments with, it used to be a little red pen. It's not, it's, it's now a tracking changes, um. And they send us back comments and we adjust the, adjust, accept those comments or go back and forth. And once we get the final notice to proceed, then we will be meeting with the Select Board. I would presume the way things are going, it's rather slow still at the state that it will be in July that we do that. Um, the Select Board will meet, they will vote, and then hopefully then sign and they actually sign the document. Then it goes back to the state to get signed by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, back to us, and then it gets recorded. So, yeah, a lot of process left still.
Lot of process, but, uh, our job right now is just to, um, to certify it off. And, uh, so, yeah, um. Uh, Sean, I have no more questions on that. It looks pretty straightforward. That's great.
Great. Elaine, you can stop sharing your screen. I appreciate your time with us. Is there anyone else at the meeting, uh, that would like to ask or say anything regarding this matter? Uh, Ms. Campbell, I believe you are miked on, so if you could turn your mic off, that would be excellent. Um, not having any other further questions, um, I would entertain a motion to, um, uh, approve this, um, certification as written with amendment to the public access. Loaded.
Sean, before I could make a, uh, a motion on that, what would the amendment be? I'm sorry.
The amendment would just be to clarify that, uh, it's within the public's viewscape, but it's not allowing public access. Um, and that might have been more my confusion just in reading it. It said in public access along the Pecumtik Range is part of the values of the open space. But I understand now exactly Elaine saying, when you're on the Pecumtik Ridge, you will look across and be able to enjoy this farmland forever. So.
Sure. Okay, understood. Yes, thank you. Well, so I'm trying to put together a motion here to, uh, so my motion would be, uh, to put in front to uh, approve the signature by the Conservation Commission of the, um, certification for Michael B. Antonellis Conservation Restriction on Old Ferry Road and Post, Post Hole Road in Deerfield, um, as presented to us this evening with one clarification on on the certification that we view it as, or understand it to be uh, open to public viewpoint, but not public access. Did okay?
I think you did great, Pete.
Yeah.
And I know Kate, so we're all in different roles tonight. So Kate is working as our, keeping our meeting notes, so, uh, and, uh, so and I'm not usually chair, so bear with us.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Elaine.
I'll second her. I'll second the motion.
All right, so I will take it to a roll call vote, uh, and start Sean Libby, aye.
Uh, Kate Devlin, aye.
Uh, Pete Law, aye, and Elaine, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Uh, actually, before you go, like, yeah.
Uh, we have, we have one more commissioner to weigh in.
Yeah. Yeah, Ben Burn, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and Elaine, my question was, I'm the administrative assistant, so at this point, uh, we need the commissioners to sign this, and I will send it back to you. Is that?
That sounds perfect.
Okay, and we, they, um, we are set up to accept electronic signatures. Would that be acceptable to you?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, great. I will send that out, get it signed and send it to you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Amy. Um, I, I was going to ask that question too. Well, I assume they could accept, uh. So moving on, uh, to the Eagle Brook Forest Cutting Plan, um, this is in my wheelhouse. It's my day job. Uh, this was submitted April, received by the town of April tenth. The the plan has probably been reviewed and approved by the State Service Forester Allison Wright. This gives us a ten-day review period, and we happen to maybe we're probably outside of it actually, but, uh, the earliest start date for this plan would have been April twenty-fourth if there wasn't a heritage restriction. Um, I'm not sure if there was or not up on the ridge, but this offers, uh, the, the Conservation Commission an opportunity, um, to look at the, basically the area that's being harvested and, um, comment if there's any other uses that we have seen in the past or predict in the future. So this is forestry for forestry sake. Um, I see uh, no issue with it as presented, um, and I'm assured Allison Wright doing her job well enough that if there are any questions, um, she will address them prior to approval. I haven't been on the board since we've looked at the, of a forest cutting plan coming into Deerfield. Is that how you've handled it in the past, Pete?
Uh, yeah, pretty much so. I just wanted to make sure. Two questions I had on the forest cutting plan, I believe. And it might not be in our jurisdiction, but all the abutters have to be notified, right? With this is going on. And, um, just a question on this plan, and I've seen them before, um, under the best man of management practices. Uh, so there's nothing listed under harvesting of wetlands or wetland crossings. Uh, but there's, um, I'm not sure what filter strips are under VA and stream crossing. Can you just explain that a little bit? Are there stream crossings or?
Yep, there are going to be, uh, at least four. Um, I don't see the overflow, so there's only four stream crossings. Uh, they are on the map. Um, I didn't look at them per se. So I actually had questions. I would assume nobody is on, on this call able to, to address it, but, um, my questions to Allison would be, uh, stream crossing one is, uh, put down as an existing culvert. Um, and on the plan, they say they're going to use a temporary bridge. It is typical that we would use mats over a culvert to protect the culvert from damage. Um, but then crossing two again is an existing culvert, or rather three, all of them are existing. Um, but on the map, it says possible culvert or temporary bridge. So I, they might not be using that stream crossing as possible use or not, or because they say it's existing. My question is, is it existing or is it not existing? Um, but it would be outside our purview. We could ask Allison, are these existing culverts or not?
No, it, it's actually just a, thank you for that, because it's kind of a question about the, uh, actual application and what it meant, um.
The filter strip for VA means variable. And we, we apply variable filter strips in a couple of cases, um, uh, long streams that are greater than twenty-five feet in width. Um, along lakes and ponds over ten acres and, uh, anywhere, uh, we have outstanding resource waters and they're tributaries. So that is a particular map that you can see on Mass Mapper. Uh, I check it in front of everyone. Um, imagining they checked it and they're in a outstanding resource water district. So uh, the variable is, it's the filter strip width is based on slope. So if you have no slope, it's a regular fifty-foot filter strip. If you have a little bit of slope, it goes to ninety and, and it goes beyond there. So, um, I didn't, it's, looks like a very well-done plan.
Yeah, no, just, those are just things I haven't heard. So, um, thank you. And actually, I just asked Amy to put it on the agenda as you know, as much for information for the commissioners, because there's, uh, you know, a number of projects of going on at Eagle Brook and so, right now. And so just wanted everybody to, uh, have the, uh, ability to review and ask questions, so.
So, the real intent, when a cutting plan comes before a concom, because it is an agricultural exemption to the Wha-, uh, Wellness Protection Act, is to really clarify, A, that if we know of wetlands that they might not know of and we don't see them mapped, but also um, if we've say denied, uh, permits in the past for development, and now it looks like they're going to have three clear cuts right where we've said no homes. Uh, that's when it's really important for us to be getting to, um, the service forester sooner than later. Uh, we can go at any point past the ten days, but, um, it would probably be good practice, uh, that the moment we get these cutting plans in, Amy, to email them to us, and that might be what you do anyway, um, but we don't need to wait because for all of my hill towns, I've approved these plans before they've even seen, you know, if they meet once a month and they don't do a lot, they don't, uh, my approval comes in before this one does typically. And this is missing a locust map, but this is an out-of-state filing, so um, a lot of times the little stuff gets missed on, things like that. It's not, and you can tell where it is, so, um. All right, moving on. So we have, uh, next on our agenda is the Eagle Brook Track Renovation. Uh, the ANRAD pursuant to the Wetlands Protection Act, uh, for, um, uh, it's an abbreviated notice of intent filed by Wes Smith, uh, from Eagle Brook. Who do we have representing Eagle Brook?
Hi, uh, my name is Jesse Moreno. I'm here. I'm one of the engineers.
Excellent. You did a great presentation, Jesse.
You know. Um, I'd like to share my screen if I could.
Yes, please do.
Everybody, uh, see that? So, um, as you'd stated here, we're, we're here tonight for an abbreviated notice of intent for a track renovation project, um, at Eagle Brook School. Um, the goal here is, um, improvements to the existing facility with the installation of, uh, synthetic grass uh, within the inside of the rubberized track. Uh, several consultants worked on this project, including, uh, Proterra, which I represent. Um, Lucas Environmental did, uh, some wetland flagging, uh, Northeast Survey did survey, and, uh, Rad Sports helped out with the, um, synthetic grass design. Um, I'm here tonight with, uh, Tom Johnson and also, uh, Joel Orzal of, uh, Lucas Environmental. Uh, so the location of this, um, is on the, um, Eagle Brook campus, um. You know, Eagle Brook's a pretty large campus here on the western slopes there of the Pecumtik Range, um. Pine Nook Road is here. Um, all the classroom buildings are sort of to the south here. This is on a northern piece of property here. Um, and it is the location of the existing track. Um, again, you know, Eagle Brook School is a independent private school, about two hundred and fifty kids, uh, six through nine. Um, they proposed to renovate the inside of this track area here um, and change from a graph, grass to a synthetic turf field. We're also going to, um, move these long jump pits from the south, uh, to the north side. Uh, most of the work here is designed is, is outside the buffer zone. There's a small area along the south side here that's, that's in the buffer, but generally we're, we're outside. The work is outside. Um.
Jesse, what's the line on the, uh, buffer zone there?
Um, I'll get to it in a little bit. It's kind of an overview. I'll, I'll kind of drill down a little further on some more detailed plans and show you exactly.
All right, thank you.
Uh, so this original location here, the track used to be a cinder track, uh, built in the mid nineties. Um, and about two thousand and one, I believe, they upgraded to provide sort of like a rubberized track surface, more high-performance track surface at that time. Um, and now they're looking to, uh, uh, bring the, uh, inside of the track up to, uh, um, to sort of current standards here. Um. We are, um, on this particular site, um, the soils here are pretty good. They're loamy sand, silty gravels. Um, we did not observe groundwater to, uh, six feet plus here. Uh, this agrees with the published soil data. Um, we are not in a, uh, priority habitat. We're not in a flood plain. We're not in an ACC. Um, we're not an outstanding resource water or surface water protection area. Um, however, like other parts of the campus, as we discussed previously, um, we are in the, uh, interim wellhead protection area, but we are down gradient of that. Um, again, the subject property here, we're kind of on the slope. Um, this white area is the location of the, the track now, and that's where our work is concentrated. Again, the soils here are good, um, and, um, really the work involves, you know, removing, um, the uh, grass in, in topsoil from the inside of the track and installing the synthetic surface here. As far as the resources here, um, this is, uh, the, the the existing condition plant split into south and north. We'll start with the south. Um, basically here, there's, um, wetland resources were flagged by Lucas Environmental. Um, is basically bordering vegetated wetlands that are primarily forested wetland. They're on the east and west sides of the track. Um, they're primarily from wetland seeps that kind of seep out of the hill. And there are some bank in these lower areas that are present um, uh, within the delineated portions of the sea. Um, we were able to get EcoTech, um, out there to review, um, shortly after they, they took a look at the dining hall project. And, um, they were able to review and, uh, suggest some, um, edits, which we were able to incorporate on the plans that were submitted. Um, we were, the, the request was to add a few wetland flags in this region here, um, which were added. Um, they also provided a memo, which we'll talk a little bit about later. Um, and, and those comments have all been addressed on the plans. We go to the north side of the site, very similar. We have a similar wetland weeps on that western slope. Um, and you'll notice here, um, there's existing drain lines that go from the center of the field, excuse me, um, out to the edge, uh, uh, down the slope. Um, we're actually going to be able to reuse those existing pipes, um, and that kind of reduces a lot of the impact here. Um, Pete, I think you were asking before about the wetland buffer line, and I'll review that quickly here. You can see here that this is the location of the track. This is the field. And this line here represents the buffer. And you can see because the wetland is pretty far down the slope, there are very limited areas here that are actually within. And you can see because the wetland is pretty far down the slope, there are very limited areas here that are actually within uh, the buffer. And for the most part, we can stay out of those those areas. Um, these are some photos of what the existing track looks like. So again, there's a rubberized track. There's uh, existing um, kind of lawn. You know, grass area in the middle, um, and there's a access road around sort of the outside. Um, on the slopes, um, again, the forested wetland, there's uh, intermittent channels, and these are the wetlands that were flagged. Uh, in these areas that kind of come out of the slopes here and weep. Um, in their memo, which we'll talk about later, um, Eco Tech um, noted some old silt fencing in the woods. And um, they suggested that be removed, which I think is a a good condition that we could add here if if um, if this is so approved. Um. As far as those four drain outlets that we talked about previously, we're able to reuse those. And one of the things that we were able to do, and actually DP suggested this as well, is the primary ones that we're using. Were able to put um, add level spreaders there on plunge pools in those areas. So. Um, one of the things that we did, but that are on the plans that are a little bit different than the narrative. Is that we added a little bit of buffer disturbance to allow us to get down uh, to those locations uh, to be able to construct those. Uh, but that would all be temporary uh, impact uh, to get down there. And um, we feel that, and I think DP agreed that adding those spreaders would uh. The benefit would far outweigh uh, the temporary nature of the impact there.
And Jesse, not to uh, despite you had the map up there, though.
Yep.
That would be at the end of the drainage.
Yeah, so I'll I'll go into that later, but there's.
Okay.
There's two locations here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, um, going a little faster. There's two locations. Um, they're not in the wetlands. They're actually just above them on the slopes. Um, and yeah, those are the primary uh, drainage paths for what we're proposing. So we're able to up upgrade those.
And so those wetlands that you. Identified here on the map, at least two or three of the, it's like at the end of the drainage pipe, isn't that created by? The drainage over the years or?
Yeah, so that was a question that was brought up by DP and um, so we looked at the record plans and uh, from ninety five and from two thousand one. And at that time of permitting, um, there weren't flagged wetlands there identified in any of those plans. So we surmise that, you know, over the past twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, that um. You know, combination of weeps and in that the flow there has sort of extended. Um, the the wetlands up from lower locations on the slope.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Um, so getting into the uh, plans a little bit more deeply here, um. You know, again, we're talking about renovating the inside of the field here, which is denoted by the hatching. Um, the area with the crosshatch here. Um, this is going to be the synthetic grass and the part to the north here is going to be a rubberized surface, multi-use surface where they would have the high jump and. Um, the long jump areas would be moved to. Now, as we stated um, previously, um, most of the work is outside the buffer. We have these areas here. Um, along the periphery, and then as we talked about, these are the two areas that we're going to provide the armoring and the. Uh, level spreader there. Um, uh, to help dissipate those flows, and that's the main outlets from uh, the field area. Um, we are also um, adding, which is typical of of what you'd see on a a newer field and track area. Um, we're adding a uh, trench drain that basically goes around the exterior of the track. Uh, the reason for that is is the track here is kind of like shaped like a bowl. Uh, the high point here is on the outside. It's kind of super elevated. So when folks run the corners, um, it's a little bit easier, but. Basically, there's a high point at the edge of the track and all the runoff heads towards the inside. Um, previously, there were um, catch basins basically on the field. Uh, but because of the new surface, um, we've added uh, basically trench drain around the exterior. And and that's going to pick up any runoff from the track surface.
And does that go into the two? Existing outlets, or does that just go naturally flow?
Uh, nope, um, we actually, uh, I'll get into that a little bit here. Um, so what happens here is. Um, both. The new surface. Okay, and these lines here represent basically drains beneath the field. Uh, so the track surface is synthetic surface. It's got a pad, and then it's got a big layer of stone, a big reservoir of stone. And um, what happens is both the uh, collector drains here and the runoff through the track surface. Enter this big stone reservoir underneath where it's allowed to infiltrate and what doesn't infiltrate. Um, you know, your larger storms is able to exit those 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 pipes that go down um, to those level spreader areas.
Okay. And the side, the engineer for what's what size of storm?
Uh, so we, the two in the ten year storm, and we also looked at the hundred, and there's no increase in flooding there. Um. Yep, so that's if you look here, this is kind of what's going on. So there's a track surface on the edges. There's a uh, like a trench drain, and then this entire area beneath the field, a couple acres of stone. Um, about uh, ten to twelve inches thick. Um, with additional storage on the outside here. Um, and that good sandy soil here, we're able to store and infiltrate a a lot of that runoff. Um, so unlike the field that's there now. Um, the field now, because it's got loam on it, you get a combination of runoff to catch basins and some that seeps in the ground. On this type of surface, because it's porous, most everything that hits the surface here uh, goes through. Um, what doesn't? Um, from the track and from that other surface can enter these trenches here, and they go into this underground area. Uh, as well, and connected to these pipes, there's basically outlet structures that uh, control larger storm events. Uh, down the slope using those existing uh, culvert pipes. Um, one of the things here we are able to do as far as stormwater is in the trench drain where um, we added these uh, filters. And um, they're called T dam filters. What they are, um, there's some pictures here. Basically, there's a filter media. Inside a stainless steel housing, and you put these uh, ever so often along the trench drain. And um, you can see here that if there is any sediment, um, we don't expect very many on a track surface like this, but if you do get any. Um, uh, they get stuck behind here, and you can be able to clean them out. Um, and they also treat some of the runoff that goes through before it exits into the uh, stone storage underground.
And how are those maintained?
Yeah, so um, basically, you can see here. Uh, they fit inside this this four inch trench drain, and on occasion, you need to remove this. And this media opens up and you can replace the filter media inside. Um. In talking with the manufacturer, you know, if you were at like a loading dock, you know, this is something that'd have to be done, um. You know, uh, once per year, but on a track surface like this, we don't really have. Um, a lot of TSS, um, it's basically that rubberized track surface. Um, they want you to inspect them yearly, but um. Basically, you if you had, you know, twenty or thirty of these, maybe, you know, five to ten a year would be on a rotating. Uh, cycle to replace uh, as needed.
And who's responsible for that?
Uh, that would be um, uh, the folks at the school. Um, in the package that we sent you, we have um, long-term maintenance plan, and it is included in that. Um, there are several things, there are several advantages to a synthetic field. Um, you know, one of them being that, you know, you don't have to, obviously you don't water it, you don't have to put fertilizer, but there are some maintenance things that you need to do. Um, and this would be incorporated into that uh, uh, standard maintenance plan.
Okay, thank you. I I didn't have a chance to read through all the plans, so that's great. Thank you.
Yep, yep. Um, we did receive um, some DP uh, file number comments. Um, we also got them in enough time that we were able to respond uh, to those. Um. We also um, were able to receive uh, Eco Tech's review of the wetland uh, flags. And um. We can go over that as well, um, but that basically they found that we had met. Um, it made the changes that they had recommended. Um, with one additional thing that they brought up about uh, old silt fence from previous project being in the woods. And we're certainly uh, uh, can remove that as part of this project.
Yeah, that's noted. Uh, on their comments three A. I believe you addressed it, but uh, expansion of the boarding wetland. Uh, by the upper flanks, uh, flags were added.
Yes, yeah.
I think you showed that to us earlier.
Yeah, we did. We were, so basically what happened is we were able to catch them at the tail end of the review of the dining hall. And invite them over to take a look while they were there. And um, we were able to add those flags in the field. I believe they're in this location here. Um, we were able to add those flags while they were on site, and then we had survey go back, pick them up, and we were able to incorporate them. Um, knowing um. Having have walked that in the field uh, with them, uh, the folks from Lucas Environmental. Um, having walked that with them, we were able to kind of incorporate it before the plans went in.
Is Arthur, Alan, or anyone from Eco Tech uh, on the meeting tonight?
Um, I don't know if I saw him. Um, we did get a letter from him, though. Um, which we can go over. I don't know if you guys got it.
I saw dated April twenty seven, the basically saying that you've addressed the concern.
Exactly. I don't see him on the call here, but if he is, he's welcome to. To unmute and join in or or. Um, we do have on the call here, um, Joe from Lucas Environmental, who did walk the site with him. Um, so maybe he could. If necessary, uh. You know, kind of go over what. Those additional flags were if you if you found it necessary to uh, to talk about that. Um.
I don't particularly.
Okay. Well, just uh, moving forward here, we had some DP DP comments. Again, we address these. Um, in writing, but let's go over them because that was basically, uh, it's only a a few here to to go over. Uh, one of the questions was. Is there an existing um, wetland boundary that's still uh, active? And we're not aware of any open orders on the track at Field Parcel. Like I said, they're from ninety five and two thousand one. And um, in. Most of those weeps on the slope were not. Uh, flagged uh, previously, so um, so that uh, again, we're not aware of any open. Um, they asked about these wetland flags in the slope and whether um, pipes were uh, put into wetlands uh, when it was constructed. Um, in the current Wetlands Protection Act, that's not allowed. And based upon uh, reviewing the plans in ninety five and two thousand one, those were not flagged at wetlands at those time. Uh, so appears that these were created um, over the past uh, twenty, twenty-five years.
I just, I just go back to the first one on the open conditions, uh, and I think Tom might have been on the call too with you tonight. Um, I know they're going through quite an extensive list of the older ones. Were, was that list reviewed against a specific project of potentially? Um. Outstanding uh, orders of conditions specific to the project in that location? Because there was quite a few of them up on the uh, the whole uh.
Yeah, uh, Tom's on here. We can talk further about it, but there was um, I don't know, probably a dozen. And and none of them were, to my knowledge, were open on this parcel or had to do with the track.
Okay, that'd be good to know because we're going to have to uh, look at another condition for the for the next one coming up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, it's Tom Johnson with Proterra. I I've been working on that um, based on the other project. As far as we know, there's not one that's associated with the track. There are some older ones that um, we're still uh, working with Amy to try to dig up some records on. Um, I think the comment mostly pertained to whether there was um, an approved wetland line. That should be held for this project based upon a previous one. Any of these other older ones are y- y- twenty years out, so. Uh, okay, that that line wouldn't be approved at this point anyways.
Yeah, just want to make sure that we didn't have to look at a special condition because we'll. We'll do that uh. On uh, the next one, okay?
Yep.
Thanks for the uh. Update, thank you.
Yeah, DP asked here whether we should classify this as redevelopment rather than new development. Um. So our position here is that even though it's a redevelopment project. To meet the standards of redevelopment in the stormwater, you have to have no increase in impervious. And because of the movement of the um. The uh, long jump pits and the creation of the uh, rubberized surface at the north end of the site. We were conservative here and considered that to be a small increase in impervious. Um, so we're maintaining that we're trying to meet all of the uh, uh, normal conditions of the stormwater management regulations here.
Okay, so that answered my other question too. So um, you did bring in to. Under this, under this area, because I was, I wrote it out like, you know, like currently, and then multi-service on the north is was previously, I guess.
Yeah, so this kind of shows it here. So if if you if you look at the entire area inside the track, this was all grass. Except there was an area over here that was paved, okay? Um, but basically, the the area, this small area in this triangle, the small area here, and the small area here. Could be considered some sort of small increase. Um, in impervious, again, this isn't a parking lot or anything. It's a rubberized surface, but nonetheless. Um. You know, that's how we uh, uh, chose to to permit the project here. I think is a conservative way of doing.
Yeah, that's why I was just gonna. Yeah, I had a question earlier on that, so that answers that. Okay, thanks.
Yep, the water from that impervious area drains to the side drains, or does it go to the to the um, impervious or the? The the new inside and down to the gravel?
Um, so there's a drains uh, on the surface here, and there's also a drain across the middle.
Okay.
Both of those enter the underground first and then overflow out in large storms out those other pipes. So they do get a chance to go into the underground system, uh, i- i- get a chance to infiltrate. Um, uh, before discharge. Um, one of the questions here was about the UIC program. And this is the Underground Injection Control Program. And because we don't have chambers under here. Um. So basically, we have a underground subsurface stormwater system. If you have chambers. Or vaults under the ground, um. You have to uh, basically uh, fill out a notification form once it's constructed and provide it to DP. Because we really don't have chambers here. It's stone. Um, we do not think we're subject to that, but we did reach out to that UIC director. We don't have a response yet. But it's not really a permit per se. It would be, it's filling out a form and notifying them that you're constructing it. So. Um, if we need to do that, we will. Um, it, from our standpoint at this point, we do not believe we're subject to that. Um, they asked here about the the turf. Can we use a CN of thirty-nine? And this is a curve number. It has to do with um. Uh, you know, basically hydrology. Um, the curve number represents the surface. The lower the number, the less runoff. The lower the number, the less runoff, the higher the number, the more runoff. Um, what we did here is we're basically um. Based upon manufacturer recommendations and discussing this with the Rad Sports folks. The way that they treat this, even though it's not in, really impervious. They treat it as impervious because we need to size the under drains. And you need to size the amount of stone and pipe. So unlike a normal uh grass surface where some of it infiltrates into the ground. And some of it um basically travels on the surface. Uh, most of the runoff here basically travels through this porous, the porous uh. Part of the synthetic and it percolates into that big stone reservoir. Um, so in this case, we're doing what the uh turf design folks recommend here. Um, and that allows us to properly size uh the storage reservoir. Uh, by the way, if we did do C N of thirty-nine, um. It probably would show, we wouldn't have to do really any stormwater improvements because it would be very similar to what's out there now. Um, so uh by by us using this number, you're actually getting um more mitigation. Um, this is where they asked if we could, you you know, if we could consider using uh this level spreader at the outlets. Um, so we were able to do that and incorporate that into the project. Um, and in one of the response letters, um we provided this detail. Um, which basically allows flow to come out the pipe. Um, this is like a stone surface and then it's got a a level spreader at the end. Um, that allows the water to um basically uh. Spread evenly uh out a large flat surface, so we don't get erosion on the slope. Uh, so we were able to incorporate that D E P comment here uh into the plans. Um, they asked about the topography here and that the commission carefully review the work. As was stated previously, most. Ninety-five percent plus of the work is on that flat part of the inside of the track up above. Very, very minimal work is on the slope. And the work that is on the slope is intended to provide a level spreader. Um, which should help any erosion that um uh could occur there. So um definitely uh the reward outweighs the the risks for work in that area. Um, the last thing was about uh the SWIP. Um, the, we are aware that a uh, we got a file with EPA. Um, just the sheer size of a uh typical football or soccer field is over one acre. So that puts us into the Construction General Permit. Um, so we can, we certainly need to provide and get coverage under the SWIP. We've all already started the consultations with the shippo, thippo, and US Fish and Wildlife. But we do not foresee any issues with that. All those consult letters are underway. And if the commission so desires, we can provide a copy of the SWIP if you would like to see it. But again, um. It, most of the works on that flat surface, we are providing erosion control. And we are aware of the uh requirements here, so I do not think there's much risk for this site. Um, with that being said. Um, I can open it up to questions here because I believe that we have addressed all of the comments that we have. And um be happy to uh answer any questions that you guys may have.
Jesse, I had a question that um, and it might be, I just maybe didn't catch it. Is the timber level spreader uh on the landscape, is that gonna come below the. The six-foot wide level spreader? Like, does the timber spreader fall outside of this diagram here?
Or. It it's right on the end here, so um.
Oh, I see, so the, that is a timber.
Right, so you can imagine um. Here, it's kind of hard to see here, but let me try to give.
I get it now. I was trying to picture it and I now.
Outlet here, these, these, there's basically um kind of a U-shaped channel. So if we put this in there on both sides, um, you know, there's uh the edges of this channel. And on the front side, we're gonna make this lip that helps spread the flow out in these areas. Um, you know, right now, these just kind of exit the slope, right? And we can go um back to. Um, let me see if I can find, you can see here, I don't believe there's too much erosion happening now, but now's the time. Uh, to make those improvements. Um, you know, that's part of the stormwater regulations is to try to um, you know, add these type of best management practices. To um to mitigate for that, so we've taken the opportunity now uh to be able to add those in those areas.
And it's correct in assuming that you're expecting less outflow anyhow. Uh, or not increased outflow as a result of the project. What what's been making these tiny wetlands coming out of those sites, you know, adding really to volume.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Again, we're pretty much matching what we have now, or slightly less. But I will say that with that, if you can think about the whole inside of the track having a, you know, a one-foot layer. And then kind of a two-foot layer along the edge, it's a massive volume of uh storage to be able to. Um, deal with, you know, uh having a reservoir of water that that's able to go into the ground. So um, I believe there will be increased infiltration. Um, but because the site's hydraulic uh hydrologic group A, it already, it already infiltrates quite a bit now. Um, so that's why you don't see a huge difference when you look at the pre and post. You know, if you had um different, another surface or a different hydrologic group. Um, you might see more of a change. Um, but again, um, we're we're showing that we are are meeting uh the 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 particular storms. Um, uh that we're supposed to. Um, we're also using those more higher intensity design storms that are. Um, basically the the Northeast Climate Center, the ones that reflect. Um, you know, these storms that have uh been sort of increasing in the last, you know, sixty years or so, so. Um, I think we're covered there.
I've got a question. While you're talking about the um, the runoff, not just from the the track. But were you thinking that this water storage system will also handle runoff from. Further up slope from the dining, the new dining area? I wasn't there a connection? Am I remembering that?
Yeah, I know, um, yeah, so we're in this area here.
Yeah.
Um, the the dining hall project is actually down here.
Over there, so it will.
Yeah, there are different fields down there, so you are remembering that there are fields associated with that. Just not here, yeah.
Okay.
So we're actually um, you know, Pine Nook Road is here, we're.
Okay.
Across the road into the north here, it's basically on its own parcel.
Okay, yeah, I missed the site visit, so I don't have it all right in my head.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, I, every time I go there, I still can't believe how big it, it's like eight hundred acres, you know, it's bigger than a square mile. It's, it's a lot of land up there, so it's uh, you're not the only one that gets confused when you go there, so. Um, i- i- it's a, it's a big property, big collection of properties, I should say.
Uh, I guess I'd ask at this point, is there anyone on the meeting from the public uh that also would have any questions pertaining to this project? I wasn't sure if there was anyone else um looking to speak.
Um, Sean, I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please.
Um. Just in, in going through some of the correspondence back and forth. I believe this is an actual request for an ANRAD. Uh, in one of the corresponds back from Eco Tech, they noticed it was a request for a. A previous notice of.
Pete, can you flip your microphone down?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Get it out of the way, so you wouldn't hear me like coughing away here. Um.
Yeah, Pete, I think it's, it was filed as an abbreviated notice of intent. I think that was just a typo on the um. Um, um, possibly the uh, you you know, the meeting outline.
Um. So which one is it?
It's just an abbreviated notice of intent. It's, we're not asking, it's not an ANRAD.
Okay, so the abbreviated notice of intent, you're not requesting. Our input on the delineation at all. You're looking at the N O I, I'm trying to.
Well, it, there would be a valid line as it would for any other project that you review.
Mm-hmm.
But um because this shows work, it's not just a resource termination. It's uh, it's showing the line and we're showing basically small amount of buffer work.
Yeah, propose work within there and establish the boarding wetland vegetation. Just want to make sure that we are.
Like there are, you know, wetland field data forms provided in there.
Yeah.
The abbreviated notice, not a lot of people use it. It's a tool because it's a little more simplified, especially when we just have buffer and periphery work. Um, and the nature of this work is being sort of inside this loop track that's already constructed. And on kind of a plateau.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that, just a clarification because it does um. As you look at the the regs here, depend, I think we have like twenty-one days of uh closing out the public hearing to um. Do the orders of conditions, et cetera, um which I might be a little bit different. We have to or red. And they don't come up uh all that often, Jesse, so I have to look back at the regs here as I'm looking at the book. Okay, so I want to make sure which was which, and then um. Yeah, there would be some, some of the conditions that I think that you had brought up that. Um. You know, you've already added the level spreaders um. That the, you know, when you look at the revisions discussed here tonight and submitted. Um, I'd like to see, we talked about the filter maintenance um.
The old silt fence removal.
Yeah.
Yep.
And um we'll probably put in some of our, okay. Uh, yeah, so I think, go ahead, Sean, I just um, if anybody else had it, I just needed that clarification. So I could actually look up the citations here in three-ten while we're talking, so go ahead.
No, I was, I was just only gonna add that the condition that I saw us adding as far as um. The notice of intent would be the the removal of the silt fence based on the peer review comment. Um.
Yeah, I might have a few others in, if I um put a motion, but you can call for one if you like. Wh- wh- if you're set, that's.
But I'm not, are you set to um hear a motion? I mean, I I would hear a motion to approve those. Abbreviated notice of intent, but I don't know if you need more time to consider any additional order of conditions. Um.
No, I think um. I can throw out a motion and then uh it'll sit on the floor and see what the other commissioners think. But I would make a motion if it, if it's okay, Sean. Um, this Pete Law, I I do a motion to approve the um. Order of intent, and I'm just trying to find the right verbiage here. Um. All right, going back and forth here, sorry, hold on um. Okay, so I'll start over again. So I would approve the uh order of intent for the Eagle Brook School for the uh. Notification here for the track improvements um with the following conditions. Um, and that it would include all of the updated designs that we discussed tonight and that were submitted. Including the addition of the level spreaders uh at the end of the current drainage area. Uh, second condition would be um. To provide the T D A M filter maintenance schedule frequency. And to notify uh to provide the notification of the responsible parties um that we can monitor that. Um, the third condition would be to provide a um. A copy uh to the commission of the U I C response that was signed off and approved. Fourth condition would be to provide a copy of the SWAP to the Conservation Commission when completed. Uh, with the final um. Condition being that the standard town of Deerfield General um O O Cs will be applicable. Will be applied as applicable uh once we kind of take a closer look and that we provide this. And I think within the next twenty-one days. So kind of lengthy there, Sean, but hopefully got it.
I would add uh the final condition being the removal of the uh old silt fence as recommended.
Okay, I can start over, but um.
No, I wouldn't.
Yeah, I thought I had that on top, but yeah, if Kate's got it, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
Um, Kate Devlin, I'll second. We didn't have the silt fence in the top, but I've got it at the bottom.
Okay. Um, I'll take, I'll take a roll call vote of the commissioners. I'll start, uh Sean Libby, uh I.
Kate Devlin, I.
Ben Burn, I.
Uh, P Law, I.
Ma- motion passes. Okay, we're moving on. Thank you very much, Mr. Moreno uh and Mr. Johnson. I thought uh your presentation was excellent and I thought that the comments from Eco Tech were um. Um, equally enlightening, so I think good job all around. Um, we have a bit of old business um and and some updates on site visits and then we'll get back to Eagle Brook. Um, but this won't take very long. Um, Zero Clark Cross Road Site Visit. Uh, I can speak to that. I did have, I don't see Mr. Avery on the call. Uh, I played phone tag um on Saturday or on Friday with Mr. Avery on the twenty-first. Um, and uh he was preparing to finish um temporary installation of the um. Uh, erosion control measures at Zero Clark Cross Road. Uh, have the commissioners had a chance to look at the pictures or do you want me to um. Try and share a screen. Um, to look at them. I would say that uh uh the photos show that the straw has been spread. On the slopes of both the uh west side of the entrance and the west side of the access point to the cleared area. Um, uh, plastic fencing has been installed and and it's been installed, I would say correctly. Um, the approach to the entrance has already had some failure. Um, there's not uh stabilization of the soils on the access roads themselves. Uh, I think it would be best if we could have Amy um set up a uh another appointment. To meet with Mr. Avery in the field to look at what he's done so far. And uh talk long-term uh solutions for um some of the issues of erosion control on that site. Does anyone else from the commission have any questions uh to ask while, you know, since I was out there?
Uh, Charles, Pete, thank you for going out there. Um, and I did review the photos. And I do see some breakthroughs on what he put in place. And I do see that some of the areas that the commission requested. That um there'd be erosion control devices put in place have not been addressed yet. And I do see that we have the fencing up. Um, but I don't see within any of the pictures, there's any um. Um, wattles or anything else that we requested or recommended. Um, so I would agree that um we need to get out there. Um, as soon as possible, um and have Amy contact Mr. Avery to um. You know, schedule another site visit. Um, but that, you know, it's a good start. Um, and it looked like a um, you know. But that, you know, it's a good start. And it looked like he, you know, responded pretty quickly, et cetera, but again, pictures are, are great, but getting our, our our boots on site and taking a look, I think would be helpful. So I would agree with your comments.
I will say this, he did get out there prior to a large rain event. Um, and when the ground conditions are disturbed as they are now, even a quick fix, like I think it was great that he did what he did, but we were always going to have some more erosion happening because the soils aren't completely stabilized. So you know, just the disturbance of even putting in the water bars and the silt fencing, you know. We had an inch and a half of rain the very next day. So I thought that it was a good effort. I think we should meet out again and I think we can make progress on that front. Uh, next old business is our, our Treehouse site visit. I can speak to that as well. Myself, Peter Law and Kate attended with Damian from Treehouse. We did it at 10 o'clock on the 7th of April, which was a Friday. Uh, we walked the, the track that they created in whatever phase it was for the track creation. We reviewed the wetland reclamation sites. Uh, it was noted that Mark Stidniki had said that the second reclamation area, the larger one, had not grown in yet and is expected to actually have a delayed germination and come in this summer. And at the end of the meeting, we basically agreed that the temporary silt fencing could be removed. It hasn't been removed to date, but it was a good meeting. We also discussed the opportunity of putting up some signage to identify the wetland reclamation areas and, and possible pollinator habitat and to identify some of the trees that were planted as part of this project. Uh, Intrias was very receptive to that. I think they would be receptive to footing the bill for signs and making signs and they're excited. So they'll help and, and we just need to get to them with sort of a format on our own or within town so that it's good and repetitive throughout. Does any other commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the Treehouse site visit?
No, I, I agree. We'd like to hear from Ken and Ben just briefly to see if they, I know Ben wasn't out there, but maybe review this information, but to see if everybody agrees on the removal of the current erosion control from the entire area. And if so, then I will work with Amy and putting a letter together to notify Treehouse of that kind of decision along with their willingness and eagerness, I think, to work with us on signage for the area on the educational signage on conservation issues. And I would also like to point out that we would like another review back uh, within a couple of months to review the replication area that was put in in the last phase, because it hasn't come up, it didn't come up last year. Uh, this would be the second year of growth season, so it should be at a 85% development area at some point this year. And also as part of that letter, just to note that they were open to expanding the said replication area if we felt we needed. So leave it up to the other commission to comment on what they feel about the erosion control. That'd be item one. But to review the additional areas on the replication area and the educational signage aspect. And I can work with Amy to put that letter together from my chair position if everybody agrees.
Hi, this is Kate. I'm, I'm in favor of removing the silt fencing at this point. The, the track looks good. Things, things are growing in some of the areas in that second area. Yeah. They, they talked about the the delayed, delayed growing, but we should see stuff coming. I bet even within the last week or so, we've some stuff must have sprouted, I would think.
Yeah, I think we can take a review probably middle of May and the May and really get an assessment of what may be coming through. And if not, then we can go back at trying to get them to put, you know, New York and here in there or, because there was a fair amount of standing water on it when we're out there two, three weeks ago. So so that's a good start, you know, in two to four weeks, we can take another look. Okay. Ben, any other comments?
Uh, no, I would agree. From what I've driven by and seen over there, it seems like it's starting to grow up quite a bit. So yeah, I would definitely concur with the rest.
Yeah, good. Okay. Amy, I'll work with you on putting together some correspondence for him. So that'd be good. Thank you.
All right. I think we can move back to Eaglebrook and this is the continuation of the hearing for the notice of intent filed by West Smith of Eaglebrook School for the construction of a new dining hall to include the construction of new sidewalks, reconstruction of a portion of a parking lot to a cul-de-sac access drive, site grading and construction of a subsurface stormwater infiltration system on the property. And uh, I will allow whoever is here to represent Eaglebrook to talk first.
I am Jesse Moreno again with Proterra Design Group with tonight with Tom Johnson, also Proterra Design Group. And we also have Joe Orzal of Lucas Environmental, who did a lot of the wetland flagging on the site. So again, this is the proposed dining hall and site improvements. This is located south of the area we talked about previously. We were last before you here, little over a month ago on March 23rd. This is a notice of intent. Just to get a little bit of kind of the location we are, we just, the previous hearing talked about the track that's located over here, north of Pine Knuck Road. We're now south of this area. So we're in this area here that's in white. Basically, the new dining hall is going to be located in this area and the new access and turnaround will be located here. And there are a number of stormwater and site improvements that are throughout this area here that I am outlining. So just to give a little recap, what are we proposing? Eaglebrook Schools proposing a new dining hall facility, redevelopment of the Baines Health Building and the Gibbs Dining Hall, which is located here on land in the central part of the campus. The proposed project basically is the construction, the new dining hall, associated grading, the new access uh, drive improvements, utility work, new sewer connection and construction of the stormwater management system with some covert improvements. The work will occur within the 100 foot buffer zone to B V W and inland bank. Um, and we are temporarily disturbing seeing approximately 250 square feet uh, of B V W for the installation of some covert improvements. Um, right now we're looking at the site again, Pine Knuck Road here on your left. Uh, intermediate stream that follows down this location here by the road. There's forested wetland weeps that kind of come out of the hill and these fingers located to the west of, of the site. North is come to your left here. Uh, west down to the bottom of the page, east up top. Um, there are some other wetlands up in this area here that we'll talk a little bit more about later. Again, we're on the western slopes here of this Pecun duck range. And the only extra kind of resource that we're in is the I W P A, the保护area. We talked about the main wetland areas.
Oh. Yeah, long, but okay.
Again, here the, the improvements are basically shown sort of in this yellow color. And you can see the 100 foot buffer zone in red, 50 foot buffer zone in blue here. North is up on the page here. So we're constructing 38,000 square foot multi-story dining hall, new turnaround access, utility, site grading, common areas, improvements. Minimal clearing and vegetation. This slope is, this area is already sort of grassed, very minimal clearing. The stormwater systems down here are what they call the varsity field down at the southern end of the site here. The existing parking lot in this area is being redeveloped into a loading dock turnaround with parking. And the, the site and building features many low-impact development practices. Um, rain gardens, green roof technologies. It's got geothermal heating. Um, it, it has photovoltaic cells on the roof, so it's a very, very green project. This is the area down to the south. This area of the field is being brought up with the material that will be excavated for the dining hall. Um, a proposed temporary hall road here is for that purpose to move the material down. Uh, there will be an underground stormwater detention facility under the field here and that will mitigate for the development, meet the stormwater management policy. I'm sort of an overview of the grading and highlights of the mostly which is the stormwater system here, utility. Again, we are proposing a collection system around the building. And it passes down through a series of pipes to an underground system here that allows water to infiltrate and there's an outlet structure to control larger events. We have a couple main outfalls, one up to the north end of the site here where we have a level spreader. This part of the project here, there was a much larger area of pavement that's been since reduced. So now we are treating that, outletting it and down to the lower area here. Um, the majority of the new building and walkway uh, passes through drain inlets and a aligned rain garden with cross-country drainage and pipe drainage system down to the lower field. Since our last meeting, I'll go over some of these plans in a second here. So since the last meeting, we've had a peer review both for the wetland and for the stormwater. We had a response to comments, including plan edits that we can discuss here ongoing. So we were able to kick off the peer reviews consultants for both the stormwater and wetlands. The reviews are completed and have been sent in to the commission. Um, Arthur Allen from Eco Tech walked the wetland line and property with Joe um, of Lucas Environmental here on April 3rd. Joe is, is able to answer any questions here if you guys have any for him. During the walk, some additional wetland flags were added in, in some locations and we can go over that. It didn't change too much. It really didn't change the buffer zone. It just kind of enclosed some areas that were uh, left open prior. Uh, Eco Tech prepared a memo dated April 27th. In that memo, they basically outlined that we have addressed their comments. Um, we received and acknowledged a stormwater review by Sarah Campbell that was, came in earlier this week, on the 23rd. Um, we did some revised, we sent survey out there, have some revised survey plans to pick up the new wetland flag locations. Um, we are also provided some additional plans and revisions to some existing plans to address Eco Tech's comments on the restoration and corrosion control and construction of the replacement area. We provided a revised T S S calculation package to address D P comments. We also provided calculations to back up the pipe sizing that we show on the plans. Um, just so uh, that's in the record. We adjusted the treatment trains a little bit. D P questioned a little bit how we broke out the different areas to make sure that we got our 80%. So we kind of went back to the drawing board and separated them out by discharge point. So we have, you know, street sweeping to water quality inlet. Um, that's on the north part of the property and the loading dock. Um, the loading dock area continues down and enters the main drainage system that's located beneath the varsity field. Um, so we have some vegetated filters and water quality inlets west of the building by the staircase um, and, and areas that are open to the west. Previously, we had a rain garden, but we actually added a lining to the rain garden. Um, and this is so we could provide a pre-treatment in accordance with uh, D P's review. Um, then we discharge to a dry water to quality swale and then we pick it up in our piping to the subsurface infiltration structure and that's the east of the building. Um, in those lines, we also are picking up the clean roof runoff and the, any overflow runoff from the green roofs. We revised some utility plans and details to address some comments and provide additional details on roof drain connections. Um, some pre-treatment B and P locations. Details on the level spreader. Previously, we had kind of a generic detail and we were able to provide detail site-specific to the two different locations. And the underdrains and slope and pipe sizing as I talked about previous. If you remember from the last hearing, we had got the Geo Tech to go out and, and provide six more borings. Uh, this was neat, this is in the area of the varsity field. Uh, this was done partly to provide some additional data for the wall designer in that area, but it also gave us an opportunity to provoke, put you know, three or four more borings in the area of the subsurface detention area. Um, and what we found is that the soils were consistent with the previous borings. That's good. And that the groundwater was five feet or more in depth down. Um, and that the bearing capacity of those soils will support the chambers that were designed to go under there. So all of those things were confirmed. Um, which is all good things. So through Lucas Environmental, you guys received a response letter on 4/26 and basically it responded to D P's file number comments and writing. It responded to the Eco Tech memo and it acknowledged the peer review by Sarah Campbell and some of the recommendations that she had um, that we were able to incorporate. Um, so at this point, we believe that all the peer review comments have been addressed and we would open it up to questions that the commission may have. If you have any questions for Sarah, I believe she's available as well on Zoom here. Um if you have any questions for Sarah, I believe she's um available as well on Zoom here.
Yes, Sarah, I uh I appreciated your review and I did want to ask if you had anything you wanted to add to the discussion. Uh I found your letter to be very complete.
I tried to break down, you know, a couple hundred pages into a couple paragraphs. I hope that made things a little bit clearer. You know, you have a small area going north to the road. The pavement decreases and it's in this massive level spreader, so. There's very little impact there, assuming everything is built according to the plans. And uh the area that comes down to the field is a bigger area. But it's traveling quite a distance and it's going under the field, so. Most of your construction impact is up high. So good construction management is important, but you don't have a real threat to the wetland itself because it's so remote. Except for the actual construction of the field. But that's on a flat area. So it's really the slopes, the biggest concern that during construction and then the monitoring afterwards.
Thank you. Uh I am happy entertaining uh questions or comments from the other commissioners. I do have one question and uh that was pertaining to the uh additional. Um details that were provided for um. The sediment erosion controls regarding the additional um. Culver being added. Spoke with Pete earlier and I said, you know, we have this big, beautiful project that's really well described and and I can understand everything and then it. Then there's one part that's this little minor piece that isn't. I haven't had fully explained to me just to, so if you could just talk about sort of what Ecotec's. Comments were and how you've addressed that in the revision of the plans.
Sorry about that, I meant to go over this plan. Um so this plan was in the package previously. Um but um uh Ecotec had some comments regarding um. Um you know, the restoration area. You know, what kind of seed mix uh we'd be using and um basically committing to some of the. Um a monitoring that would need to be done here. Um basically, what happens is down the hill uh up to the east is the existing. So there's, that's up 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 top to the right here is the field. And the series of weeps come down the hill in one area, uh one of the weeps ends up in this covert. And um it's so flat in here, it is not a good. Area, it's not getting through efficiently. So we wanted to take the time to improve that. Um so what we did here is we were proposing. Um basically, a uh field stone wall and we're going to parallel um a pipe here. Um because the swale is shallow uh to get um. Uh help get this any runoff through here um down the hill. And some of Ecotec's comments where they wanted to show some erosion control, which we're able to do here in red. Um and also um sort of distinguished between this hatching here, which is the. Uh restoration area and um uh some of the energy dissipation in the riverstone that we plan to add. Uh at the covert area here. So this plan was basically updated to provide. Uh a little bit additional detail. You're correct, it's a very small part of the project. Um there isn't much here, but um. Um it's an important area because there's a little bit of wetland disturbance here and we're able to. Um clean up that a little bit and uh Ecotec was satisfied uh uh with that.
Jesse, this is Pete Lawd. Can you tell me just where that is on the site? Is that?
Let's see, let me get a bigger plan here.
So is this the one that is north by the road or is this underneath?
Okay, here, see this is the plan here, okay. So the main campus is here. Fields are here, uh this is the the hockey rink, the ice skating rink. And that, uh see, there's the weeps that come down here. It's look this location right here.
Okay, so it's a one down below here, okay.
Even though we're not increasing the runoff in this direction, we felt it prudent to uh, you know. Basically, repair this area here a little bit. I'm sure over the years it it's um grown in and and what have you and it's wetland now. So you can't just go in there and dig it out. So we're taking that opportunity now to to sort of uh clean that up as part of this project here.
Okay, and you said that would be a conservation mix?
Um there's actually um a wetland seed mix proposed. Yeah, in order to get the covert installed, right, and to get the water. Into the pipe, we have, we obviously have to go into the the wetland a little bit and it's it's basically. The wetlands associated with the the channel, the weeps that come down the hill. So we got to get into that to construct it. But then we can immediately restore it uh when it's done, so. It's it's um, it's, I would call it, it's temporary, really. Uh but it's necessary to be able to work and install the the piping in there.
Okay, and that would be performed by your uh the professional wetland specialist, it would be a two-year period and there'd be a monitoring on that, that would be.
Yep, we could, it's a really, really small area, but I think. Um I don't think that's a problem to report, um make sure it's it's coming back. Um it's it's prudent. And we can cer- certainly do that. While I'm talking about that, I kind of brushed over some of these other plans, but. Um we basically added for constructability, we did profiles and all the drainage. Um to make it a little bit easier to understand, there's a lot going on. And um, you know. Not necessarily new information, just information in different format. Uh we did do some tweaks to some things. And uh, you know, changed a couple pipe sizes here and there, but for the most part, it's uh. You know, for constructability and to convey the design a little bit cleaner here uh uh for for the folks building.
Okay. And this goes back to your original report and and see specific address there, but um item for. Um the project will be closely monitored during construction. This was underneath the area about the steep slopes. Um the swap reports will be provided to the Conservation Commission in regular and timely intervals. Who will be monitoring? It said the project will be closely monitored uh by who? And the swap reports will be provided uh in regular and timely intervals and what might that frequency be?
Um, well, um. The SWIP is still being developed at this moment. Um I would say that um. As part of construction, um there's going to be. Um several folks involved, um Lucas Environmental and of course us. Um there's also some Geotecs. Um so during construction, um when the SWIP is uh is prepared and filed. There there's actually a uh specification being written because it's, you know, it's going to be bid out. Um provided uh we get approvals here um that um. Basically, the contractor is going to be involved with. Um creation of the SWIP and we can certainly give a copy of that. Uh because it's a um the earthwork involved in the project, we definitely want buy-in uh with them. Um there will be construction control. Um Tom here is on the line, he's met uh quite a bit more with the contractor on this. Um he could fill in a little bit more on that um if you want, but as far as frequency, you know, obviously after any. Um you know, major storm event, we we want to be watching things and and um, you know. We'll be out there on a weekly basis, but I think, you know, maybe uh. Uh perhaps, you know, monthly or bimonthly submittal of of reports would be would be relevant. Uh but we're certainly open to to uh uh, you know, any ideas the commission uh may have on that.
Okay. Yeah, I would probably like to see some of the details of just who's gonna be um. With the contractor is so we have a a contact, you know, a a a phone number and a contact.
Yeah, we we uh will definitely provide that there. I believe there in Tom can. Correct me here and I'll let him talk in a minute, but I believe a GC has been chosen. I don't think the individual site contractor has been yet and certainly when they uh come on board. And before uh any shovels put in the ground, we certainly can provide all of that contact information. Uh for the commission, uh it's important to to have that and to have a contact uh.
Just so we have that contact, so you'd want that contact information and then as you're developing this web. Um in the program, if you could provide us with. Um the details on the 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 reporting and just the frequency of. You know, what's the size of a major storm? You know, we have um conditions within the town, I think it's. I wrote them and I can't remember um a half inch within a twenty-four hour period or something of that kind of uh area. We can provide you with all that information within our um special orders of conditions. Um but we would like to kind of know like. Just when that's going to occur, when you'd be doing a review and have that documented in your plan.
Yeah, that's perfectly reasonable, great idea.
Okay.
Sorry, this is Tom Johnson, I might just add a couple thoughts there. Um. The this stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um willing, does include details like the contractor is required to. Inspect all of the erosion controls after a a storm event of such and such size, so that's. Part of the process and already will be written into that that plan.
So I know that's kind of like within this what plan, it's above us, but would you be open to taking a look at our details, Tom, that we have. Outline here in in town and see if we can.
Yep, absolutely.
Agree to it be before we we put stuff together, so we can um. Have Amy send some of that stuff out to you in the next couple of days, I presume, and uh what might be applicable here.
Yeah, I have a feeling they're 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 likely very similar, they probably. And and of the same idea. When you get a heavy rain, I intend is to making sure that there's someone responsible and there's someone inspecting the erosion controls.
Yep, and so we just want to know kind of what the details are and who's responsible, so. Yeah, sounds good.
Uh just um, there is a construction management DA Sullivan. Um and then they, through them, they'll bid and hire the the individual contractors, including the site contractor. And it will, the responsibilities will lay out down to those um, you know, particularly civil contractor. Will be i- included in the filing.
And and when might those details be available, Tom? I don't want, I know you guys got to get in there and I don't want to hold you up, but.
Yeah, me, you you know, within a couple of weeks before the start of construction.
So maybe we, okay. I didn't know if we wanted to hold off to see him before we do something or uh maybe condition that um.
I think i- if you, if the commission was agreeable to it, a condition that said uh that's. A copy of the plan to be provided to the commission for review and. You know, at least, at least whatever, two weeks prior to the start of construction.
Yeah, so need review and uh approval prior to construction. Start of construction. Two weeks prior or something, okay.
It's a it's a big enough project too, I'm sure there'll be a um, you know, kickoff meeting. Members of the commission wanted to go to that, certainly be appropriate. You can meet the parties in person, um that kind of thing, so that's certainly uh. Available as well.
That that's, that's perfect, because that's whatever orders of conditions that I was just going to kind of bring up that we'd like to have a kickoff meeting on this on this one. Um so we can send you that info and Tom, I can, I'll go through it um tomorrow. Friday, if not over the weekend and kind of send you the applicable order conditions that we have in town uh and to see. So we can kind of take a look at it between us and you before we kind of go with formal and and put it all in place and see what everybody. Agrees to or or might have um. Issues with before we, you know, put it in a document if if that's reasonable.
That sounds good, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm thinking Pete, you know, since we do have that meeting next week, I don't know, do you want to go over things at that at the next? Meeting, I don't know if things would be ready in a.
Oh, that's true, we do have to have a special meeting. Uh what's the date, the fourth?
Uh yeah, May fourth, we're having a special meeting, so a week from today.
With the five-day notice for the May fourth because they thought we were moving it to the eleventh.
Oh, I know it was put in the paper for the uh for the fifth, can everybody make that?
You eat it for the fourth.
Uh yeah, that that's next Thursday, right?
Yeah, fourth. Yeah, uh so we have one on uh five four and we may have one before we're done with this meeting on five eleven two. Oh, yeah. So, Tom, if we could choose some of that info. If you, if we could. Then try to really wrap it up on the fourth. Um we can have some back and forth before then, but maybe that would be the timeframe, we can take a few more days. To look at the order conditions of that we might have concerns with and put together um. I know you won't have your um. The construction design this web back by then, but we can kind of. Condition that relative to the before the part of of construction, but maybe we. If if your team would be available, um Jesse, Tom, uh anybody else for next Thursday? Maybe that would give us a little bit more time to just go over some of the final details that were um may want to consider.
Uh that 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 works for me, Jesse.
I'm just trying to check this, you said it was the fourth next Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm showing them, yeah, that's fine, I think I can do that.
Okay.
And like you said, if if you got any kind of uh draft ahead of time, we could certainly comment too and.
Yeah, I'll try to get that uh or it'll probably come from uh from Amy, but uh I'll try to. Work on that tomorrow morning, Amy, if not over the weekend, so. Either on Friday or on Monday, uh we can get to you, you know, with enough time to take a look at. What I think that the order condition that we have established might be applicable. Um there's also another special order conditions that we're, I think we're going to have to throw in here as well that we discussed is that um on the um. To allow an extended period for the closeout of the open orders of conditions, some of these go back about twenty twenty years or so. And I know it there's been a lot of work on it over the last three or four months and. Uh we can talk about it next week, but I suggest another four to six month period or something. Uh to try to close that out um and get those all set, but we could, we could put it in the order condition that we could um finalize that and trying to. Get those off their books too, I think we got. Three or four of them kind of completed so far, but you know, we have a another half dozen or so to go, so. But I think there's a a little bit more details that if we could take a few more days and go back and forth that we might be able to wrap this uh. You're have a good discussion on it and and have some details in front of us um next Thursday. Does that work for the other commissioners? I'm sorry to speak for everybody else.
No, that works for me.
Okay.
Need a motion to continue.
Yeah, so I was just just going to do that, Sean.
That's an easy one.
Yeah, so uh that'll make a motion to um. Uh continue the hearing for the um. Ubrook um hearing uh continuation pursuant to the wetlands. For the notice of intent and for the construction of the new dining hall. Everything else that goes with it until next Thursday, which would be May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Uh meeting would be at seven PM.
Would that be as Zoom still or yes, okay?
Yeah, with the extension that from the governor, I think we're going to continue Zoom and not go hybrid for the time being. It seems to to work out if that works for everybody else.
That's fine with me, just just double check.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Ben Burn, I'll second.
Uh I'll do a roll call vote, I'll start, Sean Libby, I.
Pete Law, aye.
Hey, Dublin, aye.
Ben Burn, aye.
Motion to continue passes. Moving on.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll get the the material out to you guys just as soon as possible. I won't hold you up. My vacation is over, so I'm back at work.
Yep, thanks. I really appreciate all of you attending and the time that you put into your reports. It was very professional, it showed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night, too.
So we are on to our last bit of old business before some general discussion, and this is the Sunny Days hearing continuation pursuant to the Wetland Protection Act regarding the notice of intent filed by Kenneth Buchan of Sunny Days Cannabis, Inc. for the construction of a cannabis cultivation campus at Zero Greenfield Road. So without further ado, I'll let Ken and his group present.
Good evening. I'm John Furman, the office manager for VHB in Springfield. With me today is Ken Boquelin, who is the applicant and owner of the property, and David Picart. It was the president of ERC Environmental Ecological Resource Consultant, who was our environmental person for the project. Since the the last meeting, we have put together a response to comments and we have we submitted that back to Berkshire Design and the the commission. So you should have copies of that. We're prepared to kind of walk through all of those today. It just what we're doing on the on the side of your process is that we have further updated plans from the ones you look you have in your possession right now with respect to some stormwater issues. We submitted them to the planning board today. And 10 minutes after our our courier walked out the door, Lucy sent us a bunch more comments on the stormwater. So what we fully expect is that we'll have a response, a another response to comment coming. It looks from the quality of the comments that we received this time that there does not appear to be any plan changes. One of the comments that we did receive is to look at some of the basins and see if we can reduce the footprint on them. The plans that we delivered to the planning board today actually have reduced, two of the basins have been reduced in size. Lucy and Berkshire have not seen those yet, but they would be delivered to their office tomorrow. So what we're trying to do is assemble all these comments together to get one last distribution. We'll get them to Berkshire. They can start reviewing it. The planning board would be currently up to speed. The Conservation Commission would be behind in one planned distribution and a comment letter that would be coming tomorrow. So.
And the next meeting with the planning board is scheduled for when, John?
March 8th. March 8th. No, no, May. Going the wrong way.
Yeah, supposed to get warmer, not colder.
Yeah, going the wrong way. So i- if it's all right with the the commission, what I'd like to do is maybe turn this over to David. He's got the first couple of comments on their response letter. I have them called up. He can call them up as well and kind of walk through the responses.
Everybody here be all right?
Yeah, hi, David.
Hi, how are you? Trying to get my juices flowing again after waiting for almost two hours, not complaining. Much better sitting here at home than waiting in a in a in a room. So.
I can tell you, Dave, going forward, anytime you come to one of our concom meetings. Yeah, it'll last for a long time and we might have one a week. It just nonstop these days. So my apologies upfront, but
Yeah.
We're trying, man.
I don't know if I mentioned this before, but I am actually, in addition to running ERC, I am full-time concom agent for the town of Northbridge, so I can appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
So with respects to the the first round of comment responses.
Could you date that one? Is it's from the VHB on the 17th or was that which one are we looking at, please?
That that's the one. That's the one, Peter, 17th.
Okay, and there's another one from the 24th from Berkshire Design.
Correct.
Okay, so we're on the 17th. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. So with respect to the one on the 17th. The first comment was about the alternatives analysis for water riverfront area, and I believe at the last hearing, I I said that you know, you had to consider zoning and sure enough, what I did was a more in-depth alternative analysis based on the Marawaya overlay districts. See if I can pull that up and share it to you guys. And I'll make that bigger. So what this is a graphic and the outline. The purple is the limit of what's called the MOD two zone. So there's one around our site. And then there's one to the south.
Right.
And I basically looked at every project that was every site that wasn't already built out. And what's shown in this red hatch box is how much physical land area we need to construct this project. So there is a vacant parcel down here, but it's actually got quite a few wetlands on it. And the wetlands shown on here were developed from mass GIS mapping soil maps. And I did kind of a windshield survey or a quick walkabout. So when you take out those wetland areas, you're actually not able to fit the project in there. We also looked at some other factors, which I talked about earlier, was kind of compatibility with the budding land uses. You know, there will be some light odors generated by this project. We also looked at like whether the areas were actively farmed because your open space plan identifies preservation of farmed areas as one of the critical goals. So this lot fell out. There really isn't anything else in this southern MO two zone that can fit the project. If you move up to the the northern MO two zone, which is larger. There was a site in here again. It has sufficient land area. However, it's actively farmed. I think there might even be a farm stand there. You folks would know better than me. The other thing about this site is, and it's hard to see at this scale, but I believe the only access is through a street that dead ends. So when you're talking about traffic, this probably isn't the ideal candidate either, as well as, as I said before, it's actively farmed. Then when you get closer to our project, this site is owned by the town, so we excluded that. These two areas here are our sites. I looked at all the ones across the street. They are all owned by Treehouse. Talking with folks there, they don't want to sell that land. Additionally, as you can see, riverfront area is this light blue hatch. We have to do more work in riverfront area to get to develop areas than there would be from our site. Moving to the north. This parcel of here is conservation land, so we want to kind of stay away from that. This is the Vesch facility. And John and I are actually working on some expansion of that. And in talking with those folks, they also would prefer that their land remain vacant for now. And if it does get developed, that'd be something related to what the existing facility is. And if you go all the way up to the north, bypass the Yankee Candle. There's fairly large undeveloped property. But again, most of it is active farmland. It's bisected by the same river we're dealing with. So you'd have to have extent in that, you know, you'd have to have 400 foot long swath of at least access road through riverfront area. So that's why that was also tossed out. And then this parcel here, which is not owned by Treehouse, is almost all wetland. So another kind of jumping to the next comment was, could we reduce our work in buffer zone and potentially riverfront area? If the project were moved from this parcel, which is current development up to this parcel, and I'll let John go through some of the physical constraints along that, but I did want to point out that, you know, again, based on aerial photographic interpretation, and I use very high res ones with no leaf cover. Soil mapping and a quick meander through the site. We're actually talking about potentially even more wetland crossings than would happen by development on this site. You could potentially have the same amount, but you have to have very long linear winding access road out into these areas. You'd still have work in riverfront area, but you'd also have the project smack up against this conservation land, which I consider it to be, you know, incompatible land uses next to each other, again, because of the the light, some noise and some odors as well. So with that, I think we are comfortably able to prove that this site is the best suited in areas that are similarly zoned, have access and don't interfere with the adjacent land uses. The I'm just pulling up the response to comments again. So that kind of goes through DP comment one. Very long response to that. BP comment two, I believe, talked about riverfront on the site associated where the stream goes offsite. And that indeed was true. That was an oversight on my part based on including the additional work in riverfront area. The total is now 9,020 square feet, which is approximately 4% of the riverfront area on the property. John can go into that there's no other place to access the site from. And then I think we've we've kind of already talked about they're probably being almost identical, if not more buffer zone impacts if we were to shift the the project northward onto the adjacent property owned by the applicant. I would point out that, you know, as currently designed, and I think John will talk later, that some of the work in buffer zone may decrease as a result of stormwater revisions. But we have 3.7 acres of work proposed in 100 foot buffer zone. And 3.2 acres of buffer zone on the property will remain undisturbed. Development of the facility on the budding lot would entail a similar amount of work in buffer zone. The average setback from the PVWs on our project is probably 20 feet. Certain aspects of the project, including, you know, the outfalls for the drainage basins and the access road crossings obviously occur closer to wetlands. And with respect to the outfalls, you kind of want to get them as close to the wetland as you can because there's significant flattening of the slope there and you eliminate the potential for the water flowing out at the ends of the pipes carving a channel into the uplands and depositing all that sediment in the wetlands. The buildings and parking areas are generally set back at least 40 feet. And to further soften the effects of work in buffer zone, we're proposing to grade the slide side slopes of the basin and some of the other features on the site with a native mix that includes herbaceous plants and several scrub species. I've used this in on other projects and generally after a couple of years, it really starts to take off and it basically becomes a thicket of what am I thinking of several types of upland dogwoods and several types of sumax. John, do you want to go into the stormwater stuff at this point?
Yeah, let me.
How do you guys want to do it? Because I have several questions that up to this details or wait till the end and come back around?
I think it'd be better if we did it right as we stop the section if everyone else agrees. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of lot of info. So if okay, Sean, I just have a couple of questions. So the review of all the other areas. Thank you. And we have looked at some of the other ones that you pointed out for other.
Yeah.
This is more of a clarification for me. Said with the changes above relative to the riverfront, it's now 9,020 square feet. As there's no other mass DOT approved location for access, the 2350 square feet of alteration related to the main access drive can be considered a limited project, limited project defined by I believe Wetlands Act.
Yes, the Wetland, the Wetland Protection Act regulations defines, you know, probably about 15 things that they
Yeah.
Consider limited projects, which basically, you know, if the criteria met, it's recognized that they have to cause wetland. And one of the criteria is to show there's no practicable alternative for avoiding work in that resource area. So.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it was 310 CMR 10. The WPA and not a DOT kind of
No.
naming. So because it was unclear in that that sentence.
Peter, while you're on that subject, can I just share my screen and show the rest of the commissioners what that limited access means? It takes two seconds.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
Let's see, it's behind here. So this you should be seeing basically a white and red plan. This is a mass DOT layout plan for five and 10. And this roadway is is classified by master key. And this roadway is, is classified by master key as a limited access, which means when they established this layout, they decided where you could put your driveways. That's where all of these lines mean. So this is the current access that we have proposed on our site. And it's defined between basically station fifty-four seventy-four and fifty-five thirty-seven. This is broken in between, so it's not continuous. You can see it goes from fifty-six to seventy-one. So the frontage of the parcel to our north generally falls in this area. And you can see there are no breaks and accesses defined by mass DOT here. The next one available is down at station seventy-one fifty-eight. And then this is the one associated with VESH. So between the one we're proposing and the VESH driveway, there are no other approved accesses by mass DOT. In order to put a driveway here, it's called a break in access process. And you have to petition the Massachusetts Office of Real Estate Development and Asset in Boston. And it takes about a year, a year and a half to get a break in access approved. So i- if this was something that we had elected to do, we would have started two years ago. And this would have been job one. But since we have this break in access already approved to us here, this is really where we need to go. And that's what it means when there's no other access point available.
Great. And that helps me too, because within WPA, it's a limited project within DOT, it's a limited access.
Yes, two different things, but yeah, so I know related.
I'm learning. But yeah, that's good. And then we talked about the, the setback from the BBWs as approximately twenty feet. I'm sure it's on the plans and I just got your new sheet of plans that's over here on my table. About four thirty this afternoon, four o'clock, and haven't had a really close ability to look at them. But other ones will be occur closer to the BBWs where they'll be out, out that distance outlined on the specific plan. So we could take a look at just how close that is.
But are you asking for just dimensions to be added?
I will. I just wonder if it's, if it's John, I got these plans from what the nineteenth?
Yes.
So I should be able to figure it out someplace from there, but are they right up next to it or are they?
They're not there. Let me share my, my screen again.
Yeah, pull up the plans that on and yeah, first focus on the stout layout.
Mean to make this a marathon tonight, but there's a lot of details that just came up.
Yeah, this is the, this is the overall plan that, that, that we have. And the best one to look at is, is the grading plan. So in general, we started off with trying to maintain twenty-five feet between the wetland limit and the limit of clearing or grading. We generally, as Dave said, for the most part, we try to adhere to that. It's, it's more in this area here. We need to poke into that in order to make the outfall based on elevations. You can see here we creep in from the building perspective, we have more room here, about twenty-five. We have more room here. Here we go right up to the wetland limit with this outfall. The tree line basically shows, you know, where we are. When we get down to the dispensary building and detention basin for a, we get fairly close to the, to the wetland limit. Here is a crossing. We again go back out. We're, we're probably about twenty feet here. We're about thirty feet here. But you can, you can see as you walk around the site, we generally try to limit how close we get to these areas. You know, this, this is a generic line and we put it out here because we have one contour line showing here, you know, we could extend that over and pull that one back. We get over to here, we're just in buffer zone. We come around this way. This basin is actually very close to the, to the wetland edge here. But then again, we go across to the, to the crossing here. So we're in it. This one here, we tried to maintain twenty to twenty-five feet around. This is the wetland replication area, which David can talk about. We have our first wetland crossing. We go back out, come back around. This is the wetland line here, so we're generally pretty far away. Now we kind of convert over to the riverfront line. And you can see this area here is the amount of area that we're in the riverfront buffer.
Okay.
For this thing. And then we're back to where we started.
Yeah. And besides the basins, there's really not much on slope differentials across site.
Yeah, yeah.
As I mentioned at the, at the beginning of the meeting to the plans that we delivered to the planning board, basin one B, this one here. And basin four were made smaller. So they, they had, not substantially, they're, they're still there, but they're smaller. We were able to play with basin seven a little bit to, to make it smaller. But in general, there, there, the, the effort, effort associated with that was to reduce the amount of free board that we had in the, in the basins. And by making them smaller, the water level went up where it was to, to reduce that. So we were able to, to make these a little bit smaller.
Okay.
And Ken, Peter, what I was attempting to say, could you pull that plan up again, John? He can do it quicker than I can. Yeah. So you see where the, the contours are close to the BBW? That's like the outer slope of the berm or the detention basin, correct?
That's correct.
And that's where we would use this, I believe it's called a roadside matrix seed mix that New England Wetland Plants puts that, puts out that I told you has a nice mix of native herbaceous plants and the the dogwoods and sumax, which are very attracted to, for wildlife.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, is that, that mix specified in the plan? Because it just includes native.
I, I think it was something we came up with since the plans have been submitted. But yes, that can be added.
Okay. Yeah. So that would be under paid for. So add the mix of the herbaceous and the, the shrubs. And it also talks about within a few years after work is completed, generally we look for, you know, an annual review in the rep, please, we can look for and look at eighty-five percent after two years, that type of thing. So that would be also, you could include that type of information for us in that detail.
Absolutely. So, you know, the, the wetland replication area is already going to be monitored pretty intensively the first two years. So those side slopes can be looked at as well. You know, I, I said two years because sometimes you throw down seed mix and you have the right summer, it's like a hundred percent cover. But this particular seed mix takes about two years to, to really fill in to the point.
Even if they can need a, you know, a three year period, we get generally two, five. But, you know, depending on what the mix is, but it, it just wasn't specified here. See, the road is good. Okay. Talking about the wet basins, I think a lot in here and I won't go ask questions on that because they'll probably come up again. So maybe you're into the third response. And so I probably won't interrupt again for another five or six minutes, but I'll let you have it.
Did you guys see me flip over to the letter?
Yep.
Okay. So the, the third response was basically pertaining to the stormwater systems and the, the DEP checklist ha- has a number of low impact development items which need to be evaluated for any project. And in what the DEP reviewer asked was for an evaluation of each of those. So this, the first one was, you know, no disturbance, any, any wetland resource areas. And our response was basically that in general, we don't, do not have any impacts to the wetland resource areas except direct impact at the crossings. And because of the configuration, most of the work occurs in buffer zone. We do have work within the riverfront for that detention basin. We've tried to relocate that and to put it elsewhere. We've had, this is a, a, a updated design from the initial design that we had where the basin was not split in two, it was all one basin. And we split it into to reduce that impact in the riverfront area. So, so again, you know, that, that one's pretty straightforward. A site design, cluster development, reduced front setbacks. This one really doesn't apply to us. Our, our front setback for the roadway is actually fairly far into the site. When you look, I'm going back to the, to the overall plan. This is route five and ten. And the right of way line, our, our, our property line is way back here. It's on the other side of this wetland. So, you know, the, the front setbacks really don't matter for us because we're back further. You can see from the tree line that this development is really going to be hit between, behind all the existing trees that we're just making a cut through. Additionally, from a cluster development point of view, if you look at the hatch areas that we have, which are the wetlands, we actually have tried to condense this as much as we can. We're basically, you know, leaving room for a building, parking in a drive aisle. We're not excessive with our parking. We're just meeting what's available for zoning. You know, the largest pavement area is right here, which is needed for deliveries. This area here is our utility area for the, for the cultivation building. So I would, I would, though not, it's not an official cluster development. I would say that this fits pretty well, the description, because we're not spread out, we're very condensed. That was that one there. The next one is reduced impervious area for redevelopment only. That one does not apply. Minimize disturbance to existing trees and shrubs. I think we have tried our best to reduce that. We have less than five acres of clearing out of a total acreage of seventeen acres only on this parcel. We also still have the parcel adjacent to us over here. Between the two parcels, we have twenty-eight acres of forested area. And we're, we're only affecting, it's actually less than five, it's like five point eight, but we rounded it to five. We're, and everything else is still remaining wooded. So we have tried to reduce the, the impact to trees and cutting as, as much as possible. Low impact development credit is not being requested for the use of country drainage versus curb and gutter. So our original design that we sent to the the municipality tried to do a variation of country drainage. We didn't have any catch basins. And what we ended up doing is we created low points in the paving. And then we had with contouring created these swales. And the intent was to use these swales kind of as our water quality swell. The problem is, is that we could not comply with the total suspended solids removal rate doing that because we, if we, we're very low in the site, we're bringing in minimal fill. And we are very close to the groundwater. So in some instances, we're in the groundwater. So the water quality swells really didn't provide us with the credit that we needed. What this plan set does is that every break we're in curbing where we had those, we've added a storm scepter unit. And I believe there's nine of them. So now the storm scepter provides, I guess, treatment with, it's called the first flush, which is the dirtiest water, the sediment goes into these basins and is basically trapped there. We have consulted with the manufacturer because we're so low on profile in the site. These are being custom made for us with the, the catch basin top being cast into the concrete. And then the pipe being cast in as high as it can so that we can outlet into our basins. And in each basin has been fitted with a sediment for bay. So the water quality unit plus sediment for bay gives us in the street, in the sweeping credit gives us the TSS removal that we need for, for the project. And that's why country drainage wouldn't, wouldn't, would not work. And that, and that standard for bio retention cells and including rain gardens. We are, as I said, we are very shallow here. And what a rain garden does is it basically accepts water into a, a plant in soil medium where the soil and the plants absorb water, they, they cleanse it. And then there is an overflow pipe sticking up in this. So if it happens to reach capacity, it, it flows into a collection system. We don't have very deep detention basins here. When you look at the, the contouring of our site, there's a lot of lines here. This is actually the deepest one. One, two, one, two, three, this is three feet deep through here. So it is not, they're, they're not overly deep basins. We in, we just don't have a lot of room available for rain gardens. We are, are relying on these detention basins to help reduce the peak flow off the site. So we don't have any downstream flooding. Incorporating rain gardens means that we're creating additional disturbance within the wetland buffer zone. So we've elected not to use those and to focus solely on detention basins. One thing to correct is that these are, are not wet basins. We went out and did some hand augering and we are either at or in the groundwater on the majority of these. So these basins will, will be what's called a dry basin. We will be constructing them in the dry when the, when the groundwater is, is low. We'll be putting a liner in these as a physical separation and barrier between the groundwater and the water that comes into the detention basin. Each basin has a, an orifice with a positive outlet. So after the storm is over, these basins will continue to drain at a controlled rate, but they will, they will dry out. They will not stay wet and they're, they're contoured and they're graded so that everything flows towards that, that outlet area. That was the rain garden comment, constructed stormwater wetlands, including gravel. We are very compact again, and we elected not to use that. Tree box filters, they, they're, they have limited value for a project like this. We'd be sitting in the groundwater because the groundwater is fairly high on these areas here. And we'd have to construct the internal drainage system for when they filled up to increase the, to collect the increase in, in water that might be going to them that it can't use. So it goes to a basin anyway. A water quality swales, we already talked about those. We really couldn't address our, our, address our TSS and water quality. Grass channels, kind of the same thing as a water quality swell. Incorporating these things means that we're actually creating more disturbance and green roof. We're just not into green roofs for the project. All the roofs on these buildings are sloped. They're not flat and the cost of that is just prohibitive for the project. I'll keep going unless there's some questions on any of those.
No, I think you answered a couple that I had highlighted here. So the dry basis, you still have a lining in it, just some kind of a membrane.
Yeah, it's a, it's a membrane. And that was actually a comment that Lucy had is that when you have these basins constructed in, in groundwater, which a couple of these are, if you use a clay liner, the groundwater is still going to be there. And eventually it will permeate into it. So there'll, there'll be no separation. So we've already talked to Ken and he's exploring installation of a HDPE liner. There's companies out there to do it. We did a very large one up in Lenox at a golf course up there for a huge detention basin. And they had this liner installed in a day. They, they, it's so easy to put in and it's just the way to go. So we'll be putting the specs together for that.
Okay. So, okay.
So if I might say some, something about the, hi. The, the lining, I mean, it's, it's, that, that would be a question to the board also. It's if, I mean, of course, the plastic lining is, is plastic. And so the, these basins all have an outlet at the bottom, so water in, water out. And so the, these basins all have a, an outlet at the bottom. So water in, water out. So if, um, if they were lined with something with clay and there was some seepage in, it would be leaving. And so there would be room for the storm, wa- the, uh, the runoff. Since it's a, it would, they would always be empty theoretically. So, um, I just wanted to point out that plastic is, is, um, is plastic.
Yeah, so you're saying that at, at a given point, if there's enough. Volume of water that the flow would not go out or, or that one location. But within the clay, it could be dissipated a little bit.
What I'm saying, correct, John? Your, your low flow outlet is at the bottom so that if water is coming into these basins. When you don't buy seepage because they're sitting in, 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 uh, in the groundwater. It will also be exiting the basins as it comes in, in a non-storm situation. So. Um, it's just something to consider how, how these things, if, if these things are going to be lined. Also, some of the results from John showed that, um, I think basin. Three, three, uh, you found this, the groundwater is below the bottom of the basin. Um, not two feet or it may be a foot. So.
Right.
Uh, that one is, shouldn't be sitting in the groundwater, but I also, uh, think one of your comments is that you will be. Doing official test pits at these, at these locations, um, before, before they are built. So.
Yeah, and tha- that's actually the next, uh, next comment, uh, Lucy in, in the, in the review letter. But, uh, I, I, I think what, what Lucy's trying to say, but not, not really say. Is that you have, uh, for these basins, you're kind of having an artificial. Uh, liner being brought in PVPC versus something that's natural, which, which is clay. Um, and, and, and that, that is true. What we're also trying to do, the planning board is concerned about fill being brought in. Um, so when you calculate how much clay we need to bring in, you need a minimum of a six inch thick layer spread over all these things. Um, if you use the HDPE liner, you have a truck come in with a crew. You don't have, uh, all the soil being brought in. Uh, it's quick. Uh, it's certainly not cheaper. Um, but they're in and out and there's less impact as a soil brought in. So, uh, we've made that decision to, to use those. That, once it's done, they're covered with six inches of topsoil and they're seeded. Uh, and you'll never know that they're.
Okay. Yeah, that helps a little bit. Thank you.
Yep. All right, uh, moving on. Uh, the geotech. So, uh, Lucy just kind of talked about that one. When, when we did the design. Uh, Ken had already performed soil borings on the site for the buildings. And, uh, it did take a, a while to get access. Uh, into the site through the, uh, the permitting process. So, uh, when we looked at the borings, they're fairly consistent. Uh, so we based our designs, um, on those. Um, the first comments that we had and discussions we had with Berkshire Design was that we really need to have, uh, soil testing done at each. Uh, infiltration basin, and that's actually required by, uh, um, the DEP. Through one of the conference calls we had with, with, uh, Chris and Lucy from Berkshire. Uh, Chris came up with the idea that if we go out and just do some hand augerings to kind of confirm our assumptions, which we did and I'll share those with you in a minute. Um, they would consider allowing the project to go through the permitting, uh, based on those hand augers. Uh, with a commitment that once the site is cleared, we would get in there and do official, uh, test pits at each, uh. Uh, detention basin site, we would log in and if the, uh, the results of those tests. Show that we could alter the basins, uh, uh, and reduce the footprint, we would. Uh, one point to make is that, um, we, we, we feel that, uh, the design we have shown right now. And presented to the commission is the biggest it's going to get. We've assumed worst case scenario on every situation. If we go out and do these tests and find out that our assumptions. Uh, can be bettered, the basins would get smaller in size. So you are approving, uh, temporarily. The, uh, worst case scenario, uh, if the design can be bettered, we will certainly do that. And then, uh, send updates into the commission, the planning board and to the peer reviewer to have that reviewed. And, uh, what we ended up doing was, uh, you should see me, uh, flip the screens into, uh, the overall plan. So we went out with a hand auger on, uh, April fifth. And, uh, I have the layout programmed into, um, our ArcGIS software on my handheld. So we were able to get fairly close to the location shown here. Uh, O'Reilly tablet oak had had three borings here, which are actually fairly close to the, to the basin. So we relied on those. Uh, for these two, um, and I think this is the one that, um, uh, Lucy was referring to. We had redocks at thirty-six inches. Um, and the basin is only going down about two feet. So this one may have some clearance on it. But we still don't make the, uh, two foot clearance, uh, recall, separation required by DEP. But in general, uh, they were very consistent. This basin here, uh, we got down six to eight inches. And groundwater was immediately flowing into the, the hole. So, uh, this. This, uh, basin here has to go down another couple of feet. So this is one of the ones that we will actually be waiting for the groundwater levels to lower. We'll carve this out, line it, bed it back down, and then we're, we're going to be, uh, in good shape. It'll be anchored down. Um, and so these are, uh, generally the results. So the, the response to the comment is that we, we ended up doing these. Uh, further comment is, is that Berkshire Design asked that Jeff Galano, who is our, uh, soil evaluator. What evaluator, put together a soil evaluation sheet for each of these. Um, we, at this point, we did them just for, um. Uh, groundwater and with a hand auger, Jeff really couldn't see the soil profile that's on the side of the test pit. So we'd like to reserve the formal, uh, soil evaluation for when we're able to get in there with a backhoe. He can see the sides of the, of the test pit and actually get a good determination. So. Um, so that, that's what we did on, on this comment here for. Uh, comment five, we've already.
Did, uh, and just talk a little bit of, of four, just to clarify here, what you're, what you're then asking is. You know, to, for the project to be allowed to progress through the process based on the hand auger. Uh, relative to the earlier, um. Soil borings that were done. I can't remember the contractor right now, but you asked us to do, to do that. But with the right to go, to have a follow-up complete soil test done. And then. You're thinking that what you have now is conservative enough that if anything, it would be reduced in size, that we may reduce that, but.
Yeah, they.
So that's a, that, that's probably, I, I just want to understand the assumption and then maybe ask Lucy to say, to, to kind of comment on. Do you agree with that assumption that they're asking us to look at or, uh, you agree that this is conservative approach? To the, to the soil testing and I'm not sure if I've clarified that question, right? It's kind of getting late in the night, but. Um, I just want to understand what's being asked of us and, and, um. What the thinking is here.
Uh, so let, let me jump in before Lucy responds. So I think you've summarized it right. So, um, we, we relied on, uh, formal soil borings that weren't located in the basins. At the suggestion of Berkshire Design, we went out and did hand augers in each basin, basically to determine. If our assumptions on groundwater were correct and we feel that they are. Um, and the soil classifications seem consistent with what the borings are. If we're allowed to proceed based on those assumptions and those hand augers. Um, we would ask to include a condition in the order of conditions that once the site is accessible. Um, we do formal test pitting in each basin and complete. Um, the, uh, soil evaluation by a soil evaluator in the actual, in actual logs. And, uh, it is our opinion that we have a very conservative design now. It will certainly not get any bigger. If anything, it will get smaller. So you are permitting the, the biggest footprint right now.
And just totally, some, total aside, if it had to go bigger, you are open to expansion?
We would prefer not to because.
Right, but. If the numbers don't quite match up with what you want to see.
Yeah, the, the size of the basin is based on, uh, the impervious area. And, uh, you know, the flow through the site. Uh, Lucy and Jeff Galano from my office have worked very hard to fine tune the model. Um, and every time we go back and we visit it, uh, we basically are either removing, uh, internal errors in the program. Or we're fine tuning the design. So we're, we're, we're very close to mimicking what's going on out there in real life. Um, every time we do that, have done that, the flow rates coming off the site have dropped down. They have, they have yet to go up. Um, we are very confident that we are not going to, uh, that, that this design is not going to get bigger. It's going to get smaller if anything.
Good. Now, I, I'm thinking I, I understand the, the ask and the, and the process and, 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 uh, procedure here.
Uh, and I would, I would leave to Lucy to answer your question on if that's a reasonable request.
Well, I do, would just like to say that first, uh, first of all, part of the stormwater report is to identify the soils on site. And the first, the first thing you do is you look at this web soil survey and, uh, and this, this particular site has. Uh, sea soils mostly, I think, but it also has an area of A soils. Sort of up where the cultivation building is, which A soils would be, uh, very good soils to infiltrate stormwater. Um, so, but the site is also has, has high groundwater. I mean, it's all wet. There's wetlands everywhere.
Yeah.
But part of the, uh, part of our hope in doing the augers was also to get a, an idea. Of the sandiness of the A soils and just to corroborate the soil survey. That's what you do in the storm report. Um, but I guess we, 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 we are, we only have, um, the groundwater results. So as far as, is permitting this, I, I, I agree with John that this is probably the biggest that would happen. But I also think it, it might be quite a task to, um. To be, to reduce these, uh, to change the design at a future date. To reduce it, which I think would be a great idea, um, for less disturbance, um. Because it's sort of a hard thing for you to, uh, to address in your order of conditions. Um, also, I think part of the thought was that maybe if the groundwater was deep enough. Maybe some recharge could occur at this site because so far, we, there's no recharge. And that is standard three to do it to the maximum extent practicable. Um, it doesn't appear that it's practicable here, uh, based on, on, on the groundwater. But, um. You know, uh. Th- this is, it's a difficult thing to say. Well, if during construction you found a, a sandy area that was high enough or something. Uh, will you do LID? Will you do some recharge? Um.
Hmm, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you both. And I, I, I just read that a few times afternoon and I. Can't quite get my head around it. So that helps a lot.
So, so Pete, I'd just like to make one comment. So, um. I was, I was out there, um, we did these tests with OTO last year, uh, May first, second and third. It was a very wet spring. Um, we dug these, we did these test pits. Um, I went back in the summer last year, um, and cleaned out some of those holes and checked them. It was consistent in the summer. Then we went back again, John Furman and I, um, a couple of weeks ago and dug these hand augers. Um, it's been consistent every time for the last two years, um, that I've been going out there. Um, very consistent. The soil is very consistent. Like Lucy said, there's one place that John and I found that, that the soil wasn't. You know, completely dirty and silty and, and, you know, like, pretty, pretty, you know. Soil that's not going to like let the water permeate through it. Um, uh, there was one spot, but it really wasn't. Like, you know, it wasn't a solid finding. You know what I'm saying? It wasn't like, okay, this is great. So as far as consistency, these, the level in these holes never changes, um, year round. Summer, spring, fall, it's been the same. I go there all the time to this property and check and walk my property. It's the same all the time. Through all seasons. So I, I doubt at any point in time that we're going to get anywhere as close to the two feet. Um, that they're requiring, um, from the bottom of these retentions to the groundwater. It's, it's not going to happen on this site.
Okay. All right, any, any other questions or anything, or, or John, you want to continue and we're getting late on time tonight. I don't, and this is a long.
We still got a ways to go.
Yeah.
We got a ways to go. Get some coffee.
Uh, so, uh, the, uh, question five has to deal with the total suspended solids. Uh, removal credit, uh, which again was not adequate based on our initial. Uh, attempt to using, uh, 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 swales. We, I explained how we solved that, which was. Uh, to install, uh, water quality units and sediment four base. Uh, uh, Berkshire did provide a comment, uh, to reorder, uh, the, the way in which they're listed. On the TSS sheet, which we'll do tomorrow. Uh, but that won't have any, uh, difference in their results. They're still going to be the same. The, uh, this one here was basically a, 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 uh, uh, comment to the, the commission to review. Uh, standard eight, which is basically the rates of runoff occurring, uh, during construction. Uh, so our response to that is, is that, uh, uh, which, which was, uh, also talked about at the pro- project, uh, previous to us. Is that we're disturbing more than one acre. So there will be a stormwater pollution prevention plan and a general permit for construction. Issued through for the EPA and that SWIP plan, um, the, 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 you know, there was a time when, uh, they were kind of a joke. Uh, to put together two or three pages, but the, uh, the, the latest regulations, which were just issued in February of, uh. Of, um. I think it's of, of twenty-two, I mean, uh, November of twenty twenty-two, uh, now require a very extensive review. Uh, for stormwater, for erosion, uh, historical properties, uh, rare species. So they, they end up being about, uh, uh, an inch, an inch and a half thick. So, uh, during constructions, the contractor's responsibility to manage, uh, flows from the site. Uh, if he sees an issue, the SWIP allows him to make those corrections and then he has to log them into the book. So there's a running. A running total, uh, of, of what he's done there. So our, our response to that, to, to help you make a decision on standard eight was that. Just require, would require a copy of the SWIP, uh, which would, which would take care of the majority of that.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions, John.
Sure.
It says that it can be provided, um, can we move that to be, will be provided?
You, you can certainly change that any way you want. That is an easy one. We're going to do it anyway. So.
Yeah, and then.
Making like, we're making like ten copies of it. I don't think it's much of an effort to make another one. So.
I, I gotta do another bookcase over here pretty soon.
Yeah, we can certainly provide that.
So with a, with a general construction permit, it's a, a one acre of disturbance, uh, for the construction project. Is that by? Overall project or is that by project phases? Cause I am assuming you're going to have. Numerous project phases, entry roads, other established, other establishments. So each one of those would be sub acre, I would assume.
Uh, no, it, it's for the, the, uh, the overall project. You're, you're not allowed out the fragment project, much like you aren't with many other regulations.
Right, okay.
They, they will have to have, uh, this, the SWIP done. And the NFTs NOI done, I believe, two weeks before they start construction.
Okay, all right.
And, and, uh, you know, uh, again, I work for, as an agent now and I worked for another town before. And, you know, every order conditions I write says you have to provide the commission with a copy of SWIP. At least two weeks before work starts.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they, there, there are a lot more details to know because you know, we could, we could spend hours drawing in where temporary sediment basins are gonna be or swales. And. The contractor will take a look at it and says, well, I was actually gonna do something completely different, so that should be over here. Yeah, so why not wait until the contractors engage and you have something that's actually gonna happen?
Well, we would, we would strongly recommend that uh that, that. That there would be additional measures and a phasing plan. On the plan that you not wait to uh for the SWIP. Um they're just, it's fundamental to protecting the site during construction. The perimeter controls shown on the, the plans are not sufficient to protect this site. And um we strongly recommend that, that uh phasing plan be developed. Uh and uh. And, and set locations for sediment traps be identified, they could be where the detention basins are. Um but those would have to be in place before this site uh be, gets cleared. Um is a, a very large site with very quick connections to uh resources, resource areas.
Well, actually, it is a large site, it's actually pretty flat, except. Right along the wetland edges. Um you don't wanna put in certain controls before you cleared the ground. Because you're gonna have to destroy them to do the ground clearing. And you know, again, I. Contractors are a lot better than they used to and they get fined if they don't follow D I P D's. You know, we just completed a project in Northridge where the first phase was. Guy went and roughed out the road and built all the basins. And then they're being used as temporary during the construction process. Obviously, they'll have to be cleaned and finalized, but that may be what the contractor for this project comes up with.
But would the town have um? You know, if the, the, the contractor's gonna put this together, did the town have any say on the orders?
Well, I, I.
Or we just gotta get a report two weeks before and say this is what the hell we're gonna do.
No, I, I've seen a couple of things been done uh Peter um. That you get two weeks to review and comment and uh. You know, the work can't start until uh all. Recommendations have been adequately addressed. Uh in one instance, on a really big tough site, uh. The commission uh. Had a peer reviewer review the SWIP and the, the erosion and sedimentation complaint, the construction one. Um you know, obviously, if there's any breaches, then uh. You know, the contractor and the applicant are on the hook to fix it as soon as possible, but.
Yeah.
You, you know, this isn't something that's being built on the side of a hill with dense till. It's something that's relatively flat, that's lined with clay, so you're not gonna get a lot of infiltration. But you're not gonna get uh very long times of concentration, is that correct, John?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's options, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, many. Yeah.
It's another reg I gotta study a little bit more before we.
Yeah, I, I think you.
The E P A reg?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good luck.
That's about three hundred pages.
I spent forty, forty years of my career reading E P A regs. Rags and.
Okay.
U S D A regs and.
Yeah, if you need it, I can send it to you, I have it electronically, I can email it to you.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, sure.
You know, I think the bottom line is it says weekly or. Um immediately following any storm events of zero point five inches of rain over a twenty-four hour period.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's something else I add into an order of conditions very often.
Yeah, cause we have that and our just town orders condition, I think it's. Quarter inch, but.
Well, that's, that's, that's even better.
Yeah.
Protection, yeah.
Um but yeah, so I'm just wondering like. Where are order conditions that we've have in town would get overrun or could be provided or can we comment and, and you know. Going back and forth with contractor and so forth and so on.
Yeah.
So just looking at protecting the town, that's all.
Yep, just, just to add a comment to that, like uh, like Dave said, um. This, this property is virtually almost flat. Um there's, there's no slope where water is gonna be running down across this property, it's virtually almost flat. Um and then unlike years ago. Where clearing trees might have taken a week to get in there. Um my guy's gonna clear these trees in a day. He's gonna come in there, once we get in there, the fellow buncher's gonna go in there and clear that place out in one day. So if there was a condition where. We had to wait till good weather, we had a window of four days or three days of good weather, we could get in there, wipe those trees out, flush cut them. And then we'll come back um uh directly afterwards and for two days, put this silt fence and straw bales in. And at that point in time, um with a flat piece of property. Um in good weather, you know, I, I see no problems on this property.
So to clarify, the sort of order of work would be um tree clearing. Then silt fence uh and straw bales uh or wattle. And then the stumping and the clearing and would happen after the, after the erosion controls are in place.
Correct, absolutely. And at that, at that point, if the contractor wants like temporary basin, so let's go in at that same point. And I would also say that what's clearing is done. I say we're gonna put some kind of like temporary swamp mats so equipment can get back in there at the approved road crossing locations. Um that is when uh the test bidding should be done, that John discussed earlier.
So it, it seems like it's not an unreasonable thing to have some kind of what you've just been talking about on the plans. And which is basically a phasing plan or uh and state on the plans that you are gonna clear the entire. Four or five acres.
Yeah.
In one spell swoop. And it seems like it would be reasonable, as you just said, that there should be sediment traps. And so because relying on perimeter controls for five acres of clearing is uh, is a, is a problem. It could, is a potential problem.
Actually, and uh, you know, Lucy, with all due respect, until you start stumping and grubbing. Um there isn't really a lot of runoff or sediment exposure.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that they should go in before that. With all due respect.
Uh I thought you said if after the tree clearing's done, tree clearing and stumping and grubbing are two separate processes.
I, I understand.
Okay, good, yeah.
So we would have the clear cut. Then erosion control uh process in place and then the stumping and clearing.
Correct, correct, that's the way, that's the way it's been done for, I've been doing it the same way for forty years, same way. We go in weeks, we flush cut, we put up the silt fence and the, and the, and there, you know, all the straw bales retention. And then we go ahead and then we stump it out and get those stumps off the property.
So I think some, we're all probably talking about the same thing here um. That if it could be outlined in the plan, then everybody would know exactly what is, what is gonna, gonna be done. So if that could be included in the plan, just what we've outlined, this is gonna occur, this is gonna occur, this is gonna occur.
A P E R, I think later on in one of the questions, we actually do provide that in a narrative.
Okay.
Which is one of the, the questions we're, we're working towards.
All right.
All right, so.
I'm just saying, I uh, I got uh off the airplane about two o'clock this morning, uh I think running on fumes all day, so.
You might, you might make a record of being awake for twenty-four hours straight.
Come on, you've had, you've had two weeks of rest on the.
Yeah.
Come on.
Twenty-four hours.
Rest on the beach, we've all been working, come on.
I could do that in my college days, twenty-four hours, but that's a long time ago.
Uh so, so kind of moving on, seven is a, is an easy one. We actually had a, a, a point discharge from the, the basin. Um three, which is by the roadway, uh entrance roadway going into the wetlands. Uh we thought it made sense to combine uh that outlet with where the culverts were. And had that whole thing kind of rip wrapped together. Um but what we ended up doing was just pull it back and then we have separate rip wrap pads for the crossing. Uh culverts and uh that discharge, so that one's been taken care of. Uh number eight uh from the D E P uh regarding the actual culverts, we had R C P pipe shown. Uh and uh Mark Stinson basically said that the Army Corps. Requires a minimum uh two by three covert. We started looking at the geometry of that, so basically what we have is we have at the first crossing where the weapons is, we have two. Two by four culverts and we had the uh internal crossing, we have one two by four. Uh each of these is basically set down six inches, so it has a natural uh um. Uh bottom on it, so and, and that, these are shown on the plan set.
And that's a six inch of the natural bottom of the uh. Upstream and substrate.
Yes, yes, yeah, all of them do.
So comment on, could I comment on the uh, the wetland crossings? Um the. So these are being designed as wetland crossings. Um but in the, in the ANRAD, the, these crossing locations uh talk about intermittent streams. And um this is just a question I have on what, why the ANRAD says that. Uh it appears that three stream crossings will be necessary for the project. At such time as the crossing locations are selected, additional detail will likely be necessary. To accurately delineate the stream banks within the B V W for the design of the crossings. Um so that's part of the ANRAD. And uh the reason I questioned this is that the uh document that, that uh D E P was referring to has. Uh stronger standards for uh stream crossings versus uh wetland crossing. Um.
That is true, we just went through that with uh another project.
Yeah, um I can respond to that, that, you know, I wasn't involved during the end rap process and I'm a little confused about. Certain things on that as well, but you know, I've looked at both the areas and where the crossings are proposed. And I don't see a tr- stream channel there. And I believe that was discussed in the field with several other commissioners as well. When the N R A D was filed and they came to the same conclusion. I will say though, that if there were a stream there um. It's. The culverts that are being proposed would exceed the stream crossing standards, okay? With respect to the, the cross sectional area and the hydraulic opening, as they call it.
So I think that there uh at a minimum um. There should, there should be some kind of statement about the hydraulic and ecological connectivity of the proposed covert.
Yeah.
Also noted that the covert on the plans has a slope of four percent. Uh it's got um, which is a very steep slope for a wetland that appears to be. Uh closer to one or less than one percent. I also noted that the pipe is not located on the flow line that is indicated on the survey. The flow line is uh the pu- the pipes seem to be uh. Located in the middle where there's a small upland, whereas the flow line seems to be uh west of that location. So I think that there should be some additional uh. Design or look into this covert. Uh both covert designs. They also have a huge rip wrap apron on the, on the each side. And um I think there should be a discussion of the, how that affects the connect, the ecological connectivity. Of that covert, since it'll be, if it's, there's no water. Uh uh if there's not as much water down there as, as is thought. Uh there will be, it'll be used for passage too, I, I, I assume.
Uh yes, so it, I'll let John talk about the, the pitch and the rip rap because I'm not an engineer. But uh I did, um you haven't received it yet, but. Your latest comment letter asked those same questions and I have prepared the response um. I'd like to look at it a little more before and once I hear what John has to say, but. You know, uh my opinion is. Having looked at those two crossings in two different seasons in drought and in what I would call normal. Uh. On a, you know. Two inch storm, you don't get flow through there. I think you're looking more at like a ten or a twenty-five when it would actually flow.
So more the wetland crossing there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think on the, on the, the first one, which is actually on the D O T property, that there is an intermittent stream, but it's. It, it originates further south of, of the crossing, so it doesn't go through there. And I believe that's, that was referenced on the um. The, the wetlands uh evaluation by uh the, the consultant that can use. The, the, I mean, the culverts themselves, we, we have them at a very minimal slope, uh only because the existing ground is at a minimal, so they are almost dead flat. Um and so we're not anticipating a, a lot of flow coming through there. The channel in that area is so wide that the first one uh is why we have two culverts in there. Because it's not a defined channel, it's very, it's very wide. Um and having two culverts provides just a wide throw, an eight foot throat. The wetland crossing there is, is, is close to twenty feet. So um you know, with contouring in the fill that we have there, we do have a head wall section. Uh and that fill can be countered to direct any flow that we might have toward those two openings. The uh, uh the crossing uh in the site, uh the, a, a four foot. Uh covert is probably going to cover the majority of, of the crossing. Uh it's not very wide, uh you, we can, you can jump across it when you're walking the site. So that one, again, uh we, we used a uh. Uh a flatter covert, we wanted to have enough uh room above it, we're again mi- mi- minimizing amount of filler bringing in. Uh we didn't wanna have a big lump going over that uh, that, that wetland. So uh we have it sized so that we can basically just get about a foot of gravel uh between the covert and the, and the top of the covert and the paving that's gonna go in.
So I think for the double covert on the way in, it is in a four percent slope, so maybe we can revisit the inverts. It's uh, the contours aren't labeled on the plans, so it's hard to tell which direction is the flow is going at that point. But the inverts are labeled, so I, I, it, it is dropping two feet through that covert, at, at least that's what I saw.
We can certainly uh look at that, the, the, the survey uh it, it was, wasn't done by us, but it has. Some court, sort of an image in it and uh it's very difficult to get the contours and the numbers to reproduce. Other than uh if you look at the survey plan that we've included as a reference, once you bring in the AutoCAD file, it, it, they're very difficult. So we've ended up having to type in most of the numbers that you see there, but we, uh we can certainly take a look at that, that's not an issue.
And where most of these comments are, cause I know there's been some back and forth between what we're reading and so forth. Are most of these comments submitted already by Berkshire Design? That you're working on or are there?
We haven't even got to the Berkshire Design comments, these are still the D E P.
Oh, but I thought there was, uh Lucy said she sent some out.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Okay, she's, all right.
She's sent out. She sent out two re- responses to responses, correct, Lucy?
Correct, and I, I didn't have much time to redo the plans, so the comments on the covert were not. Uh as expensive as they should have been.
Yeah, yeah. Understood, understood, yeah.
I, I think Pete and Sean, you've both been, you've walked this site with me. Pete, I think you've been there multiple times. You know that the crossing in the back can't be more than twelve inches wide if there's ever any water in there. I don't think there's ever any, but it can't be more than twelve inches. The one in the front is quite wide. Um in two years, I've never seen water flow through there ever, um and I go in all seasons at all times of the year. Um so I think we just know what Dave and John. You know, have come up with here, I think is by far the best, the best design that we're going to get on this property for these crossings.
Yeah, okay, well, let's look at some of the the details and stuff and uh that that'd be good, but yeah, have walked the site, so thanks. Go ahead, John.
All right, well, number nine uh just says uh he's reminding you that you can pay for a peer review, which I believe you already know. And uh the wetland crossings unlimited projects, uh the guidance was attached and David already addressed that, so. We're officially through with the D E P comments, we get into Berkshire Design comments and. Uh basically, the the first couple uh was a uh to total suspended solids removal and then like. Uh we were talking about the basins being uh wet basins, but they're actually lined and considered dry basin, so we clarified that. And then we talked about how we had resolved the T S S uh. Uh classification by adding in um uh the storm scepters, uh they had discussed. Taking the uh right now, we're collecting the roof water in uh piping and we're putting it into the basins. And they'd made a suggestion to maybe break those off and then run them into a water quality swell. Uh which might reduce the size of the basins, but when we look at our uh hydraulic model, we need that water to be in the basin, so we can. Comply with the standards for keeping the flow below existing, so. Uh we have not uh we have not changed anything with respect to that. Uh comment to uh access to the site uh from a D E P, uh D O T mapping, I think we've already talked about this and I showed you the plan that shows. Where the axis is located, so I'm going to skip that. Uh access from parcel one fifty seven, one fifty dash seven, I should say, David talked about that. Uh in in his mapping um. Uh showing how we had additional uh wetlands in there and that that work may actually end up having more um. Uh impact to buffer area than where we currently are. Comment four, which is basically the detention basin uh outfalls, what Berkshire Design is asking for is to evaluate each uh. Uh each outfall and uh make sure that we have uh enough protection. Called level spreaders in order to eliminate erosion, so what uh we provided was the the. The verbiage from the the D E P handbook, which basically says for different types of slopes and ground covers, you're allowed to have. Certain velocities and if you don't maintain those velocities, then you need to provide protection, which is uh bioengineered material. Uh or rip rap. So what we have here, these are the outfalls. That are at each of the the velocities that are each of the basin outfalls, so we are below. The recommended velocities uh from the D E P for the channel slopes and the ground covers. And we are also providing uh rip rap protection on it. Uh the details that we have in our plan show that at the outfalls, the rip rap is dished and it has a. It it comes up and it has a flat rock end on it. Um it's not a level spreader per se, because the level spreaders tend to be very wide. I think ours are eight to ten feet wide, but we feel confident, given the slopes that are below the recommended uh ma- maximum slopes. And the protection that we won't have any erosions at any of the outlets. Uh getting into erosion sediment control, this is what we're uh kind of talking about, uh Lucy had mentioned. Uh temporary diversion swales, uh locations of stockpile and erosion. Uh additional uh details for soil stabilization and our response to that was, was that based on Ken's construction experience. Um you know, we'll we'll have to prepare that uh E P A general permit with the SWIP plan. Um and that will give the contractor the information that they need for maintaining the site during construction. And to make sure that the resource areas are protected, um and Lucy has already given her her counter argument on that, so. Um same.
This will be the one that we talked about earlier that we could. Comment to.
Yeah, I think the next one.
I would also like to add the the whole issue of de-watering. Uh to the to the construction phasing and timing.
So the the uh stone water pollution prevention plan also covers de-watering uh in that um. That that once that plan is approved, that that permit allows for de-watering. Um the I I don't believe we're anticipating. Any de-watering, uh Ken has said several times that he plans on digging the holes for the foundations and all of the. The tension basins when the uh area is dry. Uh we do have provisions for de-watering, we have specifications that will be putting together for construction, which has a section on. De-watering and and how to accomplish that. Um we can certainly provide those to the to the commission once they're uh constructed and put together.
So the de-watering would be in the. Which one, I'm sorry?
It it's a construction specifications.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, typically it's. Uh train it into a dirt back on a flat, well vegetated area away from the wetlands or you build a uh. Straw basin in line with uh you know, tarp. And you know, basically somebody has to be there the entire time you're de-watering to. You know, change the bags or clean the sediment up.
Yeah.
Yep.
This uh other comment here, uh number six was the one about construction uh phasing and timing, which. Um uh everything that Ken said uh about getting on site, creating uh an access point. Um you know, uh over the about thirty thousand square feet to establish a working area, cutting the trees and installing the erosion control. Top hop, topsoil being stripped, it's all uh located in these in these paragraphs here. And 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 as he has said, the intent is for the project is that once a crew is on site to have them. Finish what their task is and move on, so they'd come in, we get the the area staged, they would do all the tree cutting and then leave. Then erosion control would be installed and then leave, then the stumping would occur and then that crew would leave, so. The intent is to basically work the site as a whole. Uh seven, uh basically the series of B M Ps on the stone water manager, we've been, we have been working with Berkshire Design. Um uh to basically fine tune our stone water management. Uh report and uh the uh best management practices that we are relying on, so. Uh we're going to continue to to work with those.
Hey, Jack, can I, I'm sorry, can I go back to number six just real quick?
Sure.
Uh just said the the last paragraph on your response, um. Intent is have crews on site and work as a whole, no segmentation understood, site will be managed real time. Uh potential for role be addressed, recommendation provided the SWIP um. Again, could we get, or we're going to ask for contact information, who has that responsibility? Uh who that contact is, uh is it a wetland specialist, is it part of the construction firm, et cetera?
Yeah, so you know, uh. Again, in your order conditions, um you ask for that, cell, cellphone numbers.
Right.
Uh I someone like myself would be the environmental monitor, it's going to be more focused on. Wetland replication, wetland impacts, and then one of the contractors will be erosion and sedimentation control.
Yeah, that's the, I just. So it might have been a question, but it was, it should have been more of a a statement that we will be asking for that, so I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, oh yeah, 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 and all that, all that information is inside, I believe, the. Second or third page of the SWIP, John.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
One, one thing to to note, Peter, is that with the new uh E P A regulations. Um you know, before uh contractors would just have their their kids or somebody go off.
Yeah.
Checkings and they, you know, they kind of half ass the whole thing. Under the new regulations, as of like, I think February twenty eighth of twenty twenty three. Anybody doing inspection for a site that has an E P A permit has to complete a uh eight hour training course. Provided by the E P A and be certified, and they're they're considered a certified. Uh erosion and sediment control inspector, so uh what we require in our SWIP is that copies of their licenses and their certifications. Be included in there to make sure that they're qualified in order to do those, so. The the days of having your college kid go out there and walking the erosion control barriers to. To look for where they're falling over or over, you have to be certified and have a actual certification now.
Yeah, okay, we can get through the D P, I just wanted to make sure, because it, just in the wording here, it was, it's a little dubious, uh.
Yeah.
So, great.
All right, uh so we already talked about seven, which basically talked about water quality and the uh. Uh addition of the uh. Uh storm scepters and the lined basins. Um brigadier compliance avoidance and uh minimization um. I think what uh.
Context. Can I ask um Sean, will be with the storm scepters, uh will there be built into the plan? Um whatever necessary can um maintenance uh and cleaning out, I assume because it's intercepting the sediments. Uh that there'll be a schedule for maintenance of that included with the plan?
There is, yeah, our our stone water management report actually has a long term stone water uh um operation and maintenance. Uh plan in it and that outlines each of the controls that we have in there and it tells you when the the maintenance are. And there's a schedule there for inspection during construction. Uh what to do, which uh and we uh the SWIP would supersede what we put in our stone water management report. We always include it in there because it's regulated under the D E P, um so you you kind of have two places where you get that information.
Yeah, and again, we'll be, we're requiring those reports. Uh whatever the uh frequency is that we come up with, but yeah.
I I think what uh 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 this comment is talking about is what we've already talked about, the hydraulic model, the levels of water. And freeboard in the basin and basically optimizing the coverage of the facility, Lucy, if I'm interpreting this correctly. Uh basically saying that if we can reduce these based on soil infiltration. These being the detention basins, we should consider that and we really already talked about those, uh now the. Plan set that uh only the planning board has at this point, so two basins being reduced, but uh. Lucy will get those tomorrow and uh we will make sure that uh we follow up with a. Uh another response letter to the Conservation Commission with the updated plans. So then you'll all have the same documents. Um work in in riverfront area. Uh the the work that we have in the riverfront area is basically to install a portion of detention basin one A. Um though we, given that area there, the water uh soil types and water levels are are fairly high. Uh so we aren't infiltrating any, any stone water in that area.
Uh she has a point, though, yeah, but I think with the fixes you're doing um. Compliance with the storm water management standards will be achieved, um.
Yeah.
I think she's referring to my regulatory compliance stand uh section and then notice of intent, whereas a. Project complies with the storm water management standards, yeah.
Oh. Got you.
Which.
All right, uh and I think we've already talked about this, is the recommendation for uh additional. Uh details on the erosion sediment control to provide protection during construction and we've already. Kind of talked about that, so that is generally their response letter along with the attachments. Um uh this is the site plant, David, uh I don't think you talked about this one, did you, Dave?
No, uh I did, I I talked about adding the riverfront area impacts associated with the main access drive. Yes, so that graphically depicts those.
Yeah. To there, uh David's already showed you this one. We talked about the layout plan and we showed you this one, which is the holes that we uh hand auger. So I think we have covered what we had to present tonight.
Okay, Miss Conley.
We did, uh you know, full disclosure, we did receive a number of additional comments from Berkshire Design today. Uh we'll be addressing those um in another comment letter, which we will definitely send out with updated plans.
Okay, uh Lucy, you've been commenting right along, but this would be your time to to go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Um uh maybe I shouldn't have done that.
No, I, we appreciate it.
Okay, um I had two additional things, one of the D E P comments, number two. Uh talked about the thermal impacts of um the impervious areas in. In the B V W buffer. Um and one um. We understood uh what what uh John and Dave's response, David's response. But one thing that um could be done to reduce the thermal impacts would be to um. Plant uh shade trees. Uh it wherever possible, so we would recommend um. Uh that the board re- uh uh require uh some tree plantings. Both as tree replacements and so many trees are being cut, but also to provide some cooling, some. Beneficial thermal impacts um. In the.
Looks like great ideas, could you tell me just which letter we're looking at and what comment?
Um, this is uh the letter that is dated April twenty fourth. Um and it says B D G response to V H B and then it's comment number two, which I think is on.
Page.
Page, we get to it around page four.
Page four, um what's the bottom of page three, maybe?
Uh that's where it starts and then the response, and so number three um. We just stated that that there was no landscaping plan. Um.
Right.
I believe John is planning on some trees, but uh. A for a formal landscaping plan with with um the species noted, et cetera, and. As many as possible um to address the the thermal impacts of the paving.
Okay, well, I'm not finding it, so I'm just going to write that down here, maybe.
So it's on, it's on page, it is on page four.
Or of the.
Sort of in the middle, it says B D G response.
Can you pull that up, John?
Number one, two and three.
I could also, if, do you want me to?
Landscaping plan number three, okay. It's a shade, okay, now I see it, thank you.
So what we did do, uh which was actually your response to the planning board and their tree protection ordinance is that we have added. Trees to the site plans and they should, they should be on the ones that we uh Berkshire Design and the commission already has. We don't have a formal landscaping plan, uh we kept it simple, uh one species, which is a two and a half to three inch. Calibered uh tri-stem birch and then we have twelve of those scattered throughout the properties and in landscape planters. And wherever we don't have a utility or a uh or something that impacts to it, so. Um we we basically have twelve of them shown and they're they're on the layout materials plan.
Uh material plants, okay, and if I remember right, that was a. River birch?
River birch.
Correct.
River birch, which is good in wet soil, but not not that wet wet soil.
Yeah.
Right, so it it's it's been like that out there, is it's go to sustain and maintain for.
We were originally going to place them in the bottom of the basin and and Chris uh from uh Chamberlain from Berkshire Design had a. Comment, I think it was during the planning meeting, that they like it wet, but not. Should be wet, so we basically relocated them to uh areas outside of the actual uh basin in planters and. And areas where the 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 soil is always going to be moist because of the the composition, but they're not in the in the actual water line of the basins.
Yeah, okay, great, because I I did, after that meeting, I I looked that up. On Google and went through a bunch of that stuff, so that makes makes sense, okay, thank you.
They they are on the plan, um we were looking at them yesterday, John, so the.
Yeah.
The trees are.
Okay, I, they didn't seem to be labeled, so I I was going to ask the landscape, our landscape architects to just take a look, but I. I didn't do that yet.
Yeah, they're, Lucy, they're up, they're all the same, and then we have a note above our title block that says all trees to be. Yeah, they're Lucy, they're up, they're all the same, and then we have a note above our title block that says all trees to be this. And then we have the symbol, we have the symbol shown. It's not a formal landscaping plan, it's just, you just see them, there's twelve of them.
Okay, well, we would recommend a few more. Twelve trees is a
Closely, there's there's barely any room to plant any trees on this site. Um it's either a detention basin, it's a road or it's a building. If 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 we need to cut more trees to plant trees, I I don't think that would be a great idea.
I have, I have looked pretty closely as John will tell you since I uh I've been having to look at the storm water model quite a bit. Um, the and then the last comment was on the replication area, which I think David is going to address in that.
Yeah.
Um, there are a lot of things in the checklist that seem to uh not be in the report. And also um DEP, the western region of DEP actually has its own checklist.
Uh yes, but that has no legal authority. And if the other Boston finds out they're still pushing that out, they're in big trouble. They just released, they just released.
Let's focus on filling out the on the i- items that were.
Yeah, I I mean, I I honestly, I looked through it today and I think all the information is in there. I did note that it called something attachment D, which is really attachment C. That was an error on my part and then.
Item three.
Okay, so.
No, this is in, it's in uh the latest letter she.
Yeah, so we don't have it in front of us.
It's at the, it's at the end of the letter, uh Peter.
Yes, but but.
Eleven at the end of the letter.
Yes, I am responding to all that, so.
Wetland replacement areas, okay. Alright, got it.
Um, that is why I looked at the ANRAD because um oftentimes some of the information from the ANRAD is used to um to uh make the replication plan, uh to inform the replication plan.
Okay, well, I think it's hopefully clear that uh I went out there and did detailed assessments of both impact areas and the adjacent uplands. Um to guide the design of the wetland replication plan.
Well, I just uh normally that information is included in the in the in the in the in the uh plan or in.
I believe it is, it may just be a typograph in B versus C, but uh again, I'll reinforce the response to that in our next seminar.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, and is that? And I and I haven't even read this document, but there's this on from uh September twenty two, the inland wetland replacement guidelines.
Uh, yeah, so that that got released after I'd already done this. But I did look at it and I think I've covered everything in that, but I'll go through it again and make sure.
Give me a definite reason to read it over the weekend, like you can sit on my desk for the last month and I got another one done delineated.
Are are those before or after you read the EPA general permit?
Do it before.
I do it before. I don't think you want to read anything else once you read the EPA regulations.
Yeah, no.
You're you're a better man than me, I'll tell you that.
Bet my life doing all that stuff, um. I'll speed read and see what I can find, get the crib notes sent to along with it too, John, I appreciate it.
So I think in in general, that has covered uh
Okay.
You know, our our first response, uh we have not issued a formal one to uh Berkshire Designs. Uh two additional comments that I believe came out, nor the comments that came out today uh on the storm water model. So there will be one more um one more response to comments coming through.
Could you put then your final response to comments to include the let's see, the April twenty fourth and then the April twenty seventh, I guess, today comments into one document.
So today's comments I was writing for the planning board because that's due Monday.
Yeah.
So those were actually planning board comments that I sent you today, John.
Okay.
So.
Will there be another set for us or?
You you guys are kind of piggybacking on one another, so like when I uh when I responded to the uh planning board today, I included a copy of the twenty fourth's response because it impacts some of these. So when I respond to this letter, I'm gonna give you the planning board's response, so you guys will have all of that. So both boards will have the same, there's plenty of paper to go around, no need to fight.
And Lucy, will you have a additional responses back for the CONCOM in addition to what you sent today, the twenty seventh to the planning board?
Well, uh so I'm assuming that um that that we will look at the uh replacement plan and I think we will have comments on the the tree plan, the tree, the the landscaping proposed. And also, since the storm water report has changed. Um, I I'm hoping that'll reduce the the impact of the project and uh we still have to get through that, so I I'm assuming we we will have more comments.
Okay, I'm just trying to think about right now, I don't think I can get you on for next Thursday. Following Thursday is only two weeks away, it's probably too quick, and then our next meeting is the end of the month, I'm just trying to figure out timing here.
Eleventh.
The eleventh would be two weeks. Would everybody, then um the commission would need a few days at this point to to really assess any comments coming back and forth. So between Berkshire Design, Dave, John. Uh could we have something by say the eighth or ninth?
Planning board is the eighth.
Yeah, David has uh already uh prepared a response to the the first two that came out, so we have that, he's gonna just fine tune it. Uh the comments that came out today regarding the storm water management report, my engineer has already gone through them. He's uh updated the model, so at this point, we just have to put them in the letter. So with those two documents, we will have addressed all the comments we have to date. And that's, you know, not taking account to anything else that that comes out that Lucy had talked about.
Well, then playing boards the eighth, maybe we could and we'll have to ask the commissioners if anybody's available on the eleventh. At least look at a meeting on the eleventh. Hoping that we have hundred percent, but if not ninety nine percent or ninety five percent or something um by that time. Would that be reasonable to all everybody involved here?
I'm I'm sure my team will have everything ahead of time.
Okay, okay, uh um, great.
So really, at this point, we can entertain a motion to continue this to the eleventh.
Yeah, uh Kate, Ben, Sean, you ready for three weeks in a row of stuff, seeing seeing us, seeing each other, plus a couple of site visits in the middle, okay.
Maybe we can put this baby to bed on the eleventh, let's see what happens, Sean. If we don't get any more comments back, I think we'll be able to put this thing to rest.
Well, we'll see how it goes, but uh the commission will be available on the eleventh, that's all I can say at this point, so. I guess I would then, Sean, if you're making a uh a motion here or asking for a motion, I would uh put a motion to continue the sunny days hearing. On the zero Greenfield Road project. To commence again on May eleven. May eleven twenty twenty three at seven PM.
Do we have a second?
Okay, Devon, I'll second.
Okay. Uh roll call vote to continue the motion, uh I'll start, Sean Libby, I.
Yeah, the motion would be to continue the hearing, just to be.
Yeah.
Uh Pete Law, I.
Kate Devon, I.
Okay, motion passive.
All right.
For you all on the eleventh, I appreciate you staying on the meeting as long as you all have.
Yeah, thank you very much, guys, and send me all your reading material.
Before you guys go, John, can I just ask, when you send comments uh to me, can you please um in your email specify if they are for planning board, if they are for CONCOM, or if they are for both? Because it's getting really confusing, so just, you know, just to.
Yeah, we we put a cover letter together with each one that we sent out either to planning board or.
Yeah, that that is, that is helpful.
Yeah.
So yeah, if any of them for both, just, you know, let me know.
Yeah, I will say they they won't be for both, so the either to the planning board or to the commission, but we'll have the other letters as attachments.
Okay, okay, good, I will distribute them accordingly.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, everybody.
Thank you.
Other things, but uh thanks for your help.
Have a good night.
Back in touch soon.
Bye.
All right.
Commissioner, so I don't know if you guys want to continue with the mail or do you want to push it out to the fourth? Uh doesn't matter to me.
I can get through them pretty quick if we don't want to deal with them, but uh the only one I had is I don't really know what the DEP water quality certification uh is from the Army Corps, I assume that's just the same as the others. We got a um yearly operation plan from Pan Am Railways. A yearly operating plan from Eversource, uh both of those are just sort of procedural for us. Uh we also got a uh environmental um for again, also from Eversource, we got their vegetation plan. Um if we want to comment, we can, the period ends um April twenty fourth. Uh I don't, I don't see us.
That was already, that's already come by.
And then there's the DEP uh water quality uh certification. Um I've never seen one of these, um I don't really know what this is.
What are they asking for?
Uh they're issuing that general requirements for all activities um in town. It it looks like a townwide Army Corps certification for general products.
Yeah, I sometimes I get these things and I I'm trying to remember if it said uh you guys on the envelope, sometimes I'm kind of guessing, you think this is a townwide thing, Sean?
Yeah, it says effective upon issuance of the two thousand twenty three mass general permit and it expires with the mass general permit. So I just, we we, if you want, we can push this and re-review it on the fourth. Because I I really looked at it and it confused me, so.
Yeah, okay.
The last thing is just that there are um improvement and damage determination flood hazard mitigation program being offered by uh DCR flood hazard program um. And that was passed around, I might actually try and attend one of these, just to see what they're about, they're free, you do have to register. There's one May thirtieth, one May thirty first, and one June first. And minus myself not understanding what the water quality certification permit is about from DEP. Uh that covers all of the mail um that has come in. And uh I don't believe there are any other items that we have left unaddressed from the last forty eight hours. So I'd entertain a motion to um to close this meeting.
Before you do that, I've just got a general question.
Yeah, shoot.
Would we ever think of moving our meeting to start at six PM instead of seven? So that we're not going quite so late on these long nights. I don't know about you guys, but I get up really early and my brain is shot.
Yeah.
Does that, do we need any? I don't know what to call it, approval, I think from.
No, no, you guys.
We can just set it.
You can decide whenever you want the planning board change their meeting from seven to six thirty. You it whatever you decide it is as chair, that's what it is.
Uh Community Preservation Commission meets at six fifteen, so hard to remember.
We'll do ours at six twelve then.
I would, uh why don't we think on that?
Yeah, I I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Fine with me, yeah.
Thank you.
Ben, I'm assuming you're up early too.
I'm up late, I'm up in the middle, it don't matter.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, six or six thirty start, but yeah, that's that's fine, Kate. Doesn't bother me at all.
Yeah, I think part of what runs us so late is we're accepting so much material within the last forty eight hours that uh you know, I took off quite a bit of today just to review for tonight.
Yeah, and I couldn't do that, so I I couldn't get to every, get through everything.
I'm I'm trying to avoid that happening, this just, this was a disaster, I could not get a contract out to the peer reviewers. I kept waiting, we had a problem with it, we had to redo it and it was just not getting assigned. And you know, I mean, I was pushing and pushing and pushing and they got it so late, I just felt like, you know.
Lucy didn't have any bad comments to have to deal with, Eco Tech was like, yeah, they're fine.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, from now on, I I'm gonna uh stick to standards, assuming, you know, we don't have any problems that, you know, this stuff has to be in at least forty eight hours beforehand, or it's just not getting reviewed, which means I'm gonna ask the applicant to send their stuff in early enough so that the peer reviewer has time to comment. And the peer review should come in and the responses should come in within forty eight hours of the meeting, because this is ridiculous.
Yeah, it is, but I mean, don't we have a clock that start two on like after an RDA or an NOI that there's a three week period that we have to respond on some things?
I think an NOI you can continue, it's an RDA that has to be like done within, it it has to be closed within twenty one days of receipt. Um the other ones, it's like an NOI, you have to start within X and such time. You have to send out the decision with X and such time, but you can. Hearing endlessly.
Yeah, but some of them we have to start with it, so I was thinking that it might be easier to, we we start earlier, but then maybe if we have like what's a tremendously full agenda looks like, so, okay, do we have time to push it out another week or two weeks or something like that? So we have two meetings a month instead of the one, but instead of trying to do all these big things in one one big meeting, but we have to be careful on that timeframes.
Yeah, I think I I had sent you an email asking if you would prefer, you know.
Yeah.
Fewer meetings with more stuff on them or more meetings with less stuff. And um the other thing I feel like too, sometimes it's just like, it seems like this stuff just keeps coming and I feel like if I don't get
Yeah, two or three years ago, honestly, we, I don't know, Ben can remember, but we probably didn't have meetings three or four months out of the year at all.
Twenty minute meetings reopen, red mail enclosed.
That's what my hill towns are like still, um so we are very active.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I I didn't realize that some of this would take quite so long, but anyway, let's.
Well, some of them are pretty detailed progress, we've had the projects we've had this year, so. Anyways, you know, as far as the agenda, the meetings, uh the next one to be May twenty five. Anyways, you know, as far as the agenda, the meetings, uh the next one would be May twenty-five, but we were gonna have a have to have a special meeting on the fourth and now the eleventh, so. We'll be the fourth, eleventh and twenty-fifth, um. And other than that, uh yeah, I'll take a motion to uh adjourn the meeting at uh, what is it? Ten fifty PM on May or April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Uh we'll call vote, I'll start, Sean Libby, I.
Pete Lie.
Kate Devon, I.
Denver, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm stopping.
And Sean, thanks for filling in today, you did a great.